Okay, a few announcements this evening. Welcome back to what I am sure we all hope will be the start of a successful school year. And before I make my opening statement this evening, I would like to start this meeting on a positive note by taking a moment to recognize and congratulate the Upper Providence Little League 12 and under team for winning the Mid-Atlantic Regionals, and we wish them the best of luck as they start on Thursday in the Little League World Series. So I hope you're out there, congratulations. I'd also like to note tonight that the board did meet an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel. We did not have Linda Fazini with us, but we do have her now on the Zoom. Is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you. And now on to my opening statement. The Springfield area Board of Directors believes the community has the right to bring forth, to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about things in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will open an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the beginning of each board meeting, Springfield residents will have an opportunity to share concerns and comments about items on agenda items only. I'm sorry, about the agenda items only in the beginning. Each community member will have up to three minutes and wish to address the board at that time. Prior to adjournment, there will be an additional opportunity for the community to comment publicly. Again, each community member will have up to three minutes in which to address the board. Community members joining us on Zoom who would like to make a comment should use the raise hand feature when prompted. Individuals with their hand raised will be called on during public comment and will be asked to unmute themselves before speaking. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the name and address of all citizens who speak during public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast to the community on cable channels and online. Individuals intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. The board will do all it possibly can to assure each member of the community has an opportunity to speak on issues. However, if a large group of people wish to discuss a specific topic, the board reserves for itself the right to limit participation and total time allocated to this part of the agenda. I am not making that motion to do that at this time, but should it go beyond an excessive period of time and we still have to get to agenda items, we may at that point have to restrict public comment. Once the public comment on agenda items is complete, only board members will have an opportunity to speak on issues on the agenda. However, the chair may at its discretion permit discussion on selected items as the need arises. I would ask that we all conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion in order to get through all of what we need to tonight. And I respectfully ask that those individuals in attendance this evening are respectful, courteous, and civil during public comment and throughout the meeting. And with that, do our students reps, do our student reps have any announcements this evening?
There are no announcements this evening.
Great, thank you. So we will move on to public to be heard on agenda items only, and I will do my best to balance in-person comments along with those that are on Zoom. And before that starts, I also like to welcome Alicia Luke, who was standing in for Mark Fitzgerald this evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so in-house, we're going to start first with public to be heard on agenda items only.
John Yonchuk, 12 Edmonds Drive, Royersford. I'm speaking to the agenda item 2A, the proposed changes to the health and safety plan. Proposed changes to the 2122 Health and Safety Plan use sleight of hand claim alignment with the relevant governing authorities, but are nothing more than an abdication of your duty to protect all of the students in the buildings. The change states in part, quote, "The board recommends that students and staff kindergarten through 12th grade wear appropriate face coverings while indoors during school activities." This is not in alignment with expert guidelines. The CDC does not tell you to recommend anything, but rather states, "Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status." The key difference being the term universal. They are telling you as the governing authority to mask universally in all buildings. They recommend you implement other mitigation as well, including vaccines, which you can legally require, proper ventilation, spacing, and testing. In fact, the CDC, in alignment with Montgomery County, says you should implement multiple layered strategies, especially in places where children under 12 will be learning. Yet you choose none of these. Many on this board continue to talk about normal, but the evidence we already have from the Delta wave is that if you fail to continue with layered mitigation strategies, you will once again be quarantining children and very possibly moving to virtual schooling yet again this fall. The fact that this ill-conceived change to the Health and Safety Plan is being amended in this way demonstrates that you do not care about the children and are only pushing a political agenda. Require masks, require vaccines, and we may have a relatively normal 2122 school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
1211 Meadowview Lane, Montclair.
I'm sorry, stop, please stop. Your name first, please.
Rebecca Daniels. This is related to masks, even though it may not seem. The Delta variant is rapidly spreading and more dangerous than contagious strain may media early broadcast. Do we know what antibody mediated viral enhancement is? That's when a vaccine causes serious side effects and death. It will help us understand why all animals in the experimental COVID vaccine studies died after re-exposure to the virus after being vaccinated. This is, this also underlines the fact that no vaccine stops any infections. Why 75% of the fully vaccinated caused a recent outbreak in Mississippi, Massachusetts in the summertime when respiratory viruses are dormant? Just one example. This also underlines the fact that the vaccinated shat diseases proven in the 2014 National Hockey League. Why those who have recovered from COVID symptoms before vaccination then suffered 24 times the rate of side effects of this experimental COVID jab? These are all studies and reports ignored by the CDC NIH Department of Health. And also ignored, ignored are the reports from doctors on the effectiveness of ivermectin HCQ for treating COVID symptoms. The fact that COVID virus has never been isolated, so there is no basis for saying there is a COVID variant. The fact that COVID cases are fabricated lumping all deaths as COVID cases if they were tested for COVID before their death. Yes, just the mere act of testing put one in the COVID death category. The fact that COVID deaths from unvaccinated rose because CDC deceitfully changed recently their reporting method to test for COVID if only one is unvaccinated. The fact that CDC last week had to change back their COVID numbers from 19K to 29K to 19K for Florida that went challenged. For those whose family members were told that their loved ones died from COVID, they might want to dig deeper, continuing on the ignored are the studies of the effects of 5G Wi-Fi being deployed all over the world that causes the same symptoms as COVID. Some people are aware of the scary health effects of 5G, but even so much more detrimental so that it is not even comparable to 5G. It's smart meter in majority homes, except for the homes of the executives in the electric companies. I can go on and on for many other ignored facts by the main media, but above facts alone should make one wonder why these facts are ignored. This opposition to COVID measure is fact-checked, labeled as misinformation, and those are quick conspiracy theorists and now categorized as potential terror threats by US Homeland Security. By the way, if you dig deeper, after several layers, you will find the major funding source of these independent fact-checkers are the Big Pharma and Big Tech themselves.
I understand this is an emotional topic for everyone here and for all of us here as well, but I will ask going forward that we remember to keep ourselves in check and not to scream into the microphone or cause or behave in an orderly in any way. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Roberts. I am a professor of biology at our Sinus College. I have three.
I need your address.
Oh, 33 Sunset Road, Limerick. I have three kids in this district. I taught a course over the spring semester in which we discussed a lot of this data and this information. I'm trained as a scientist. And I can tell you that I stand here in a mask. And my daughter, who's sitting over there, is in a mask because we are in a public space. And there is a virus going around that I can tell you I have read the data. And I'm not scared, but I am being prudent and logical. And I'm being a caring parent. I had kids in virtual. I had a kid go from virtual to a different virtual class, thinking maybe that would work better, to a cyber class to finally in person last year. I'd love my kids to be back in person. They're all going to do better that way. But if they're coming into a building and this Delta variant, which does exist, I have a paper published on COVID people. I know what I'm talking about. Is, you can laugh, but you're laughing at science.
You're laughing at fact. We're not going, we're not going to tolerate, as I said from the beginning, these are to be orderly meetings or I'll adjourn the meeting. So we need to go forward and keep our comments to ourselves. This is her time right now, and we will honor that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wasn't sure I was going to speak today. I was coming to just show my support for a good decision of requiring masks of everyone in this building, in all of our school buildings. There are little kids here. My daughters are here. My son is going to be here. We don't know yet what long-term effects of COVID could happen. Are all my kids vaccinated? You bet they are. But can all kids be vaccinated? No, not yet. And some may never be able to because of other things going on in their worlds. And so the last, the least thing that we can do is put on a mask. Okay, there might be kids or people in this building who have a valid reason not to wear a mask. And we dealt with that successfully last year, didn't we? We got everyone what they needed while trying to maintain safety for all.
Okay, thank you for your time. You have a few more seconds actually because I had interrupted.
Again, I just urge you to, to use logic. Use your logic here, people, and be kind to our children. Thanks.
Thank you.
Teresa Westwood, 70 Plymouth Drive, Royersford, PA. Good evening. I'm speaking on agenda item 2A. As a parent of two K through six age children, I urge the board to follow CDC, AAP, and Montgomery County Health Guidance and Mandate, not recommend universal masking for students and staff in K through 12. This request is in addition to other proposed safety mitigation practices like social distancing and hand washing. Many other local school districts such as Phoenixville, Pottstown, PV, Westchester, and Great Valley are already following these agencies' guidelines. At the end of last year or earlier, when we had different strains of COVID, it wasn't as communicable as the Delta variant, and we didn't have 100% of students and staff in school. The Delta variant is far more contagious than others before it. The unvaccinated are getting it in a number of minutes, and it's more communicable than the common cold. Without appropriate safety measures, we'll be quarantining and have more children out of school. I want to minimize this type of disruption, keep schools open, and keep our children in school. I'm particularly concerned with our children 12 and under who can't yet get vaccinated. We're putting them and any other unvaccinated students and staff at risk without appropriate safety measures. I know there have been arguments that kids aren't getting COVID and aren't getting very sick with this new variant that's changing. Reuters yesterday reported children are being hospitalized at record numbers, almost 2,000 to be specific. Further, we've already seen how the start of the school year is going in states like Texas, Florida, Mississippi, and Georgia. For example, on Friday, 440 students in Palm Beach County had to quarantine two days into the school year. And Dallas, as of yesterday, there are zero pediatric ICU beds. Without appropriate proactive mitigation strategies, data from COSEEM estimates 80% of elementary students could become infected with COVID in the first two months of the school year with most cases in 30 days. We're also seeing an earlier-than-normal surge of RSV this year, which is scary for our young children in combination with the Delta variant. I urge the board to please set any personal feelings or beliefs aside to please not just listen to the loudest voices of the room, rather listen to actual medical experts like my pediatrician, whose letter I sent all of you, which urged you to adopt universal mandatory masking for students K through 12 and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Leboginsky, 2005 Willow Drive, Royersford. I'm not going to scare you this evening with more boy who cried wolf predictions that won't come true yet again, nor will I attempt to frighten you with semantically overloaded and meaningless one sign platitudes, and I won't quote any studies. Rather, I will provide you with the dry, boring data that unequivocally supports a vote for mass choice. At the June board meeting, you made a good decision. It was well supported by local data. Quoting Mrs. Earl, I think we've gone beyond absurd at this point. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. If you think a mask protects you, wear one. If you don't think it protects you, don't. The wisdom of your choice was confirmed by the continued low cases throughout the summer, and not only in our district, but in also in the 10 other Pennsylvania school districts which voted for mask optional, also experienced very low cases across the entire Commonwealth. Thanks to Mrs. Earl, who objectively looked at the data, made a practical risk calculation, and voted to give our students a breath of fresh air for the last few days of school. Thank you. So here's the data. As of August 10th, from Montgomery County Public Data. Incidentally, the county moved to weekly updates because there wasn't enough data to produce daily. Since June 14th, 2021, there have been a total of 41 cases in Upper Providence, 39 in Limerick, 12 in Royersford, and four in Spring City. It's a total of 96 cases in 63 days, 1.5 case per day in a district of 52,000 residents during a time period of low mask usage and significant community mobility and interaction. Check Google's mobility site, you'll see. And remember, these cases are a result of a PCR test notoriously inaccurate. So inaccurate that the FDA announced earlier this month that it would be revoking the emergency use authorization granted to the PCR test effective 12/31/21, citing that not only is the test ineffective in differentiating SARS-CoV-2 from other viruses. Now I understand why there were so few flu cases. Everything has been COVID for the last 18 months. Why? Because Medicare doesn't pay for flu cases, but they do pay for hospital cases with COVID. The inaccuracy of the PCR test comes no surprise. President of Tanzania famously sent fruit and pawpaw, I looked that up to see what that meant, samples for PCR testing, and they came back positive too. Even if you assume that the test is accurate, 1.5 cases per day is exceedingly low across 52,000 residents, and certainly not a reason to mask young children who are not predisposed to severe outcomes of COVID in the first place. You're going to hear things about more transmissibility. It's all old history. We know how respiratory viruses evolve and mutate. They get more transmissible as time. Not difficult. Hospital lesions in county beds up slightly to 79 is today across the entire county, almost a million residents. Fewer than two COVID patients in every county hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have two other people in line over there. Yes.
Scott Ziegler, 47 Clover Place, Royersford, Pennsylvania, 19468. I'm a proud Springfield resident. I've coached in the school district for eight years. Linda Fazini, I coached both of your kids, your son and your daughter. I coached soccer in middle school for years. I'm friends with some of the teachers. And I'm friends with Mickey McDaniel, and I love Springfield. My son is 14. He goes to school and he loves Springfield. My daughter is 21. She goes to SCAD. She went to Cootstown, and she loves Springfield. I'm here because I care about the decisions that we're making. When I coached, I used to tell my students this. At Springfield, we always lead. We set the standard. Do things the right way, even if it was the hard way. We adapted to whatever came at us. We stuck together during adversity. The one team I got to coach, we won the Pac-10. It was a 12, Pac-12, and we lost in states. We were never settled for satisfaction, and we never settled to be status quo. If any of you guys know being a part of Springfield, that's one thing. We do not settle for status quo. That is not what Springfield is. We set a new standard. So I'm coming to you tonight to ask you guys to understand this. Those of you that want the mask, love your children, and you care about their safety. And I appreciate that. Those of you that don't want to wear the mask and don't want your child to, you care about your child, their mental health, their safety, and I appreciate that. What I don't appreciate is how we are divided and how we walk around with swagger and talk about things that we think we know something about. We've got to start to work at being better. My suggestions on the last minute, so you know, I am OSHA certified, and I have worked at a food production plant as a COVID safety supervisor. It sucked. I don't do it any longer. Okay? It's not easy. But my suggestion is this: social distancing. We spread out and we make sure we're three feet apart. Trying to give answers here and some suggestions, guys, instead of just yelling. Second of all, when the kids are at their desks and they're social distancing, they can remove the mask so that they can breathe and have breaks, because last year my son, I asked him again today, the kids did not get breaks. Like we all were promised, they did not get them. Okay? So when the kids are seated, they can take, when they stand up, they immediately have to put the mask on. Okay? That's my suggestion, and I suggest also that we also look into making every kid have to have the mask. The homemade masks are not certified by CDC, and we must, if we're going to have masks, they must be certified to protect completely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana Kirsch, 265 Old State Road, Royersford. Um, to echo a little bit of what the gentleman just said. First, I'd just like to run through some information from an article that I read that was written by a pediatric doctor as well as a surgeon. There, there had not been any retrospective studies that were conclusive about the efficacy of masks, first of all. And they talked a little bit about the side effects on children long-term from making them wear masks. Those who have myopia can have difficulty seeing because the mask fogged their glasses. This has long been a problem for medical students in the operating room as well. Masks can cause severe acne and other skin problems. The discomfort of a mask distracts many children from learning. By increasing airway resistance during exhalation, masks can lead to increased levels of carbon dioxide in the blood. Masks can be vectors for pathogens if they become moist or are used for too long, and we know that that happens with young children. It also may exacerbate anxiety or breathing difficulties for some students. Some children compensate for such difficulties by breathing through their mouths. Chronic and prolonged mouth breathing can alter facial development. It is well documented that children who mouth breathe because adenoids block their nasal airways can develop a mouth deformity and elongated face. Not to mention the psychological harm of widespread masking, that's the greater worry. Facial expressions are integral to human connection, particularly for young children who are only learning how to signal fear, confusion, and happiness. Covering a child's face mutes these nonverbal forms of communication and can result in robotic and emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. I can personally attest to the anxiety and depression for my children that had to wear the masks all day at school last year when they reopened. It is especially important for children with disabilities such as hearing impairment. The adverse developmental effects of requiring masks for a few weeks are probably minor, but we cannot say with any confidence when this practice stretches on for months or years what that means. I just wanted to say that, God forbid, if we have to put the kids in masks, like the gentleman said, we really have to have a better plan for breaks. Last year, my kids were not given any breaks. They were given one 10-minute break in an eight-hour day. That is abusive, and it cannot happen. So if we have to do it, then we have to have a plan, a real plan that the parents can understand so they know what to expect for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to lower this for medical conditions. I apologize. Erica Hermans, 204 Abbey Drive in Royersford. I want to talk about agenda item 2A. And what I want to first say about agenda item 2A is that it is extremely poorly worded. There are folks on both sides of this discussion that cannot make sense of the board stance on masking. It's, you can't make heads or tails of it. So I am asking, are we following Montgomery County and the CDC? And are we following the recommendation and thus amending our health and safety policy to require masks, given that they are saying that in areas of high and substantial transmission, that regardless of vaccination, you should be masked indoors? Or are we aligning to the fact that it is, the recommendation is just a recommendation? In these pivotal moments where families require clarity and strong leadership, I am once again up here saying that we just need to do better. We are creating unnecessary swirl with these convoluted agenda items and indirect messaging. So tonight, I urge you to take a stand. Either follow suit with our neighboring school districts and require masks indoors. Again, of course, there are going to be accommodations necessary for one reason or another, but are we following suit with our neighboring school districts? Or don't make a recommendation at all, because by Springfield saying that we recommend masks, yet we aren't going to take the extra step to enforce it only further divides this community and creates confusion, especially for elementary school students. It is not fair to have a kindergarten yourself regulate their mask. And so I ask that you take a stand because an unenforced recommendation is absolutely worthless. It shows a lack of leadership, a lack of courage. So please be clear. Are you going to follow suit and make the recommendation and enforce the recommendation to protect our kids, especially those that are not able to get the vaccination to the greatest extent possible? Please do, or if not, just be on record saying you won't. Thank you.
Matt Smith, 11 Hillside Drive, Royersford, speaking in agenda item 2A. In Mississippi, hundreds of K through 12 students tested positive two weeks ago, resulting in more than 4,000 students quarantining due to possible exposure. The district found cell force virtual. In San Antonio, there were no ambulances available for 26 minutes due to a record number of COVID patients and a record number of calls from people who believed of themselves to be suffering from COVID. Use your personal understanding to invoke an emergency. Some of you may have firsthand experience with COVID or a family member that was infected. Use your personal understanding to inform your system. Some of you may have firsthand experience with COVID or a family member that was infected. I hope it was mild. At least then you knew you were a risk to others. Maybe you were asymptomatic. If so, can you say for certain that you didn't infect someone else who in turn had severe symptoms? Deal with the long haul effects or worse? Let's stop and consider what wearing a mask means compared to the possible alternatives. If we're honest with ourselves, it's no great burden. Possibly a minor inconvenience, but those who suggest otherwise are manufacturing outrage. Is it worse than the disruptions our children face when ping-ponging between in-person, hybrid, or virtual learning models? Much like contraceptives and family planning, there is no one method that protects our children and our stuff. Masks are proven barrier transmission and one of the easiest tools our blocks to implement. The Agenda Item as written has no teeth because some board members feel that there are no sufficient mandates delivered by the state. If you feel compelled, ask the solicitor if there are legal considerations where masks are required in absence of a mandate. Spoiler alert, there's already a dress code. My elementary school son can't wear shorts in the winter because it's too cold. Girls of all ages can't wear a tank top. Springford can't be a leader since neighboring districts have already taken the initiative. But you have the opportunity to ensure we don't fall farther behind. What can we do tonight? I ask the board member of the board to submit a motion amending Agenda Item 2A, requiring masks to conform with the prevailing guidance from the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and Child Policy Lab. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make an announcement before we continue with public comment. And that is at 8:30, I'm going to move over to Zoom for anyone that is on the Zoom that would like to make a public comment. So if you could keep your comments as short as possible as we move through the group that's in here now. But at 8:30, no matter where we are, that's where I'm cutting it off inside the room so I can balance that time with Zoom. Thank you. No, no. No, we can, no, we put it down there. They sign their name.
Hi, Ed Kusinski, 100 Osprey Way, Phoenixville. I would like to start by letting everyone know that I am a veterinarian who has spent the greater part of almost the last 30 years involved in research, all of which has been involved with live viruses. And 14 of those years were spent in the development of live viral vaccines. I am going to say that, you know, I'm not going to dazzle you or give you anything. But what I am going to tell you is that the CDC is a political tool that can't even follow its own directions. Okay? The CDC puts out a definitive biosafety guide that we refer to as the Bumble. It is called the Bio-Safety in Microbiological and Biomedical Laboratories. It is the definitive guide used by pharmaceutical labs, biotechs, research organizations to provide safety not only for the workers working with these viruses, but for everyone in the building. And nowhere, not one time in that guide, does it mention wearing a mask as a protection for viruses. In fact, they define a mask in that guide as, quote, "a covering of the mouth and nose not certified to provide respiratory protection." So what in God's name is the CDC telling us to wear a mask for? Okay? In my entire years in research, I have never worn a mask. I have never seen a single scientist working with live viruses wear a mask. We wear fitted respirators that EHS provides for us, or we wear PAPR self-contained breathing apparatus. We do not wear a mask. You want to follow science. You want to follow the curve, slow the curve. What have masks and social distancing actually done? The COVID Tracking Project, you can look it up, provided the most extensive COVID data for well over a year. 1.8% of all infected individuals in the United States died from COVID. That's it. I have friends that died from COVID. I am sorry. I grieve with them. But 1.8% of people who got infected died. That's it. School-aged children, 0.08%. Okay, that's it. We have irrational fears. I am sure that everyone here got in a car and drove here tonight. Do you worry about putting your kids in a car? You have a 1 in 106 chance of dying every time you get in the car. Does anybody worry about getting in the car? Does anybody worry about putting their kids in the car, putting your kids on a bus? 1 in 106. Your odds of dying from COVID are 1 in 100,000. That's 1,000 times more than getting in your car! But we carry on. We have this irrational fear. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. It does. The Delta variant inflated numbers. The only way to test for the Delta variant is complete genomic testing. You cannot test it by PCR or any other method. So there's no way that the numbers that they're saying there are true of the Delta variant. And if you want to follow the science, I urge everyone in this room to look up the Greater Barrington Declaration. Most people don't even know what it is. Written and signed by over 850,000 people, including medical professionals all over the world covering every aspect of medicine.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacob Erickson, 61 Mountain View Lane, emergency medicine physician. We've got a lot of data thrown at you and I'm not going to give you too much more. Everybody's done their research in this room. Everybody's made their decisions, their choices. All right. I know it's a hard choice for you guys to make. And the majority is here letting you know what they want. We're here to tell you that, we're here to carry that burden with you. All right, the majority wants mask optional. All right, that's all I want to say to you. I can keep giving you all the data from my perspective. But the majority here wants mask optional. Please follow. We're here to make that decision with you. We're here to carry that burden with you. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, Kim Anderson, 123 Patriot Drive, Collegeville. Why am I speaking tonight? We are entering the third school year, being impacted by COVID-19. Another year putting mask requirements on students and staff now regardless of vaccination status. My seventh grader will not even know what normal is at the 567 building before he has to move on to the eighth. His entire middle school experience tainted with masking, social distancing, and virtual learning. My fourth grader will likely have his final year at UPE diminished by more restrictions. People continue to scream, "Follow the science. Listen to the experts." Dr. Richard Lorraine, Medical Director of Montgomery County Office of Public Health, offered a presentation on June 3rd to give you context. He was speaking to the reasons why the CDC stated vaccinated individuals could begin going maskless indoors. Quote, "People are reluctant to give up their masks at this point. There's been a psychological sociologic development in terms of almost a dependency on the masks. It's a form of comfort for a number of people in believing that this does help protect them against a COVID infection." End quote. He goes on to discuss, "How well do these masks work?" Dr. Lorraine states that cloth and surgical masks only improve a decrease in transmission of anywhere from 0 to 15% in varied studies. But the highest that he found was 15%. We're talking about this for 0 to 15%? We're putting our students and staff through this for 0 to 15% efficacy? I believe Dr. Lorraine would be considered a medical expert by most, correct? Our K through 12 children are the least vulnerable in our population with respect to COVID-19. Using recent figures reported by the CDC, the risk of mortality in the age group 5 through 18 is roughly 0.00047%. Now let us address how many children are going to live with adverse effects of masking policies and more importantly, this perpetuation of fear in their schools. How many felt isolated? Mom and dad kept them virtual while their friends went back to school. How many developed anxiety? Am I going to get sick? Am I going to get someone else sick? How is our district monitoring these very negative side effects on our children? Given the mitigation tactics being used, I do not think enough consideration is being placed on the mental health of our children nor their physical and social well-being. It will likely not even be discussed by the board. If a K through 12 mask requirement does come up for a vote tonight, I implore board members to make certain motions tonight that other districts in the country have made. One, any mandate should sunset at midnight of the next board meeting, requiring a new vote to extend. Two, consider mask optional for 7 through 12, like we did in the last vote. Three, allow all teachers to remove their masks while teaching their classes if allowed a safe distance from their students so the students can see and hear them properly. Four, accept last year's extension forms into the current standard. Likely nothing has changed in the circumstances of the students. And five, please formalize and board mask policy. With that said, I hope you vote mask optional. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sienna Johnson, 33 Sunset Road. I'm speaking here as a student and as behalf of many other students who I know have the same stance as me. During the entire year of COVID, I was dealing with a lot of health issues. And the fact that a lot of my appointments were online instead of in-person, I was not receiving the best care that I possibly could. While I do believe that, yes, there are a lot of people that are taking COVID restrictions too far, I do not see the problem with mask wearing. Yes, as stated earlier, it can cause acne, breathing through the nose, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think those are, I think those are things we can accept in order to be safe in school. Yes, they may be low mortality rates, but we do not yet know the long-term effects of COVID. There have been people who have had coughing for months and who have had so many other long-term effects, muscle fatigue, fainting even in some situations, which kids have not been able to get back to the things they like. Even with our vaccinations, we saw a COVID outbreak in Massachusetts in which 74% of the people who were infected were vaccinated. We aren't there yet just with vaccinations. And high risk is not just the elderly. It's not just people with cancer. It's several other groups such as people with high blood pressure, heart disease, lung disease, epilepsy, chronic migraines, of which I am part of multiple of those groups. And I do not feel safe going back to school if no one's going to be wearing a mask. Yes, wearing a mask may protect me to an extent, but if I'm in a classroom with barely anyone is wearing a mask, I am not protected. So I just ask, on behalf of me and many other students I know who are at higher risk, to please mandate masks at least when we are not fully social distanced because I was promised social distancing in the hallways, yet to show up to being back-to-back with every single person. I was never social distanced in any classrooms when I was in school. I was immediately quarantined after my second day back. So I just ask you to think on behalf of the students and as well as the high-risk individuals here. Thank you.
My name is Carly Glickman Collier, 109 Rosemont Lane, Royersford. And I'll be speaking on Agenda Item 2A. I think we can all agree that our common goal is for students to return to the classroom. In order for that to occur, it needs to be safe for all students and staff. There needs to be a change from optional masking for adults and students to a universal requirement for all persons K through 12 and staff. Are masks normal? Nope. Can they be annoying? Absolutely. Do I wish that my three vaccinated children didn't have to wear a mask? Sure, but they will if it means keeping their classmates, teachers, and themselves safer. I'm not understanding how so many people have become complacent when it comes to our children's health. The reality is that kids do get sick from COVID. Some have gotten very, very sick. Serious illness could be potentially preventable if we all do our part. This summer began and I started to have a glimmer of hope for a more normal time. But the Delta variant has changed things. If we don't make hard choices right now, we can be in the same position as schools in the Southern United States. The Springford community should care for one another. The reason that in-person education was so successful last year was because of mitigation strategies such as universal masking and distancing. It is absolutely impossible to abandon these strategies and expect the same results. We know that our choices have consequences. We also have responsibilities with our freedoms. We need to think about our population of students that is unable to be vaccinated at this time and wear a mask. We need to set the bar high and our children will rise to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give you a time check, we have about 15 minutes left for in-person comments. And then I'm going to move to the Zoom to give those people the opportunity to comment also. If you want to fill out your name and things after you speak, then pass the mic to the next person and that person fills it out at the end, just to try to move things along quicker.
Hi, my name is Brett Grossman. My address is 64 Page Lane, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania, 19460. I wasn't quite sure what to expect coming here tonight. It's nice to see that the majority are here with the same common goal, which is to bring everybody together and find a common ground to where we should have the choice whether or not our children under the age of 18 should wear a mask to school, sitting at a desk for more than six hours every single day. And I hear a lot about science, but I have to go off logic. And I can share with you that just over this past weekend, I've seen some of you at Shenondale. And I've seen some of you over the summer at the beaches. And I've seen you around at the playgrounds. And I've seen you. And your kids aren't masked. And they're all playing together. And you want us to then turn back around a few days later and then put masks on these children? Like a muzzle, like a dog. Is what you want to do to my child? I I don't, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a teacher. I'm not a doctor. I don't claim to have all the knowledge and statistics. But I know this. I know that as a 45-year-old man and as my 14-year-old daughter and my nine-year-old son have been going to school, never, ever have I seen a time during that flu season where we masked up these children. We're going to force these children to wear a mask for fear of a virus that poses no threat to a child. This is child abuse. It's going to cause psychological damage. My seven-year-old, excuse me, my nine-year-old son, he's already been asking questions about, "Do I got to wear the mask?" My 14-year-old daughter and her girlfriends, who's an honor student, straight A's, all nine grades, honors. She is the sharpest young girl that I know. And when that mask was going around last year, it was as if she couldn't, it was like, "I can't take it off. I'm not supposed to." That is psychological damage. And the health effects. My son comes home. Boys are a little bit more messier than the girls, yes? And these boys come home and that mask is dirty on the inside. And they, and they're breathing it and it's filled with dirt and it's filled with sweat. You're asking these kids to sit at that table like that? No way. I'm not going to train my kids like that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if you state your name and address, and then at the end, go ahead and write everything down after you pass the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Paige Nicole Baswell, 227 Egypt Road, commenting obviously on Agenda 2A, which includes a proposed mask policy alteration from required to recommended for students K through 12. I'm an introverted person. I don't like public speaking. I'm also frankly nervous to be here in person when we are in high community transmission. My presence here should convince you, I hope, of the utmost importance of this issue as I am putting personal risk aside to be here for an issue that is, and not to be dramatic, a life or death matter. That said, a mere recommendation to wear masks is not in line with CDC recommendations nor is it aligned to most of the nearby school districts. Optional masking is certain to place our students, teachers, and staff at risk of COVID-19 infection, fuel transmission in our community, and increase the inevitability of quarantine outbreak and general disruption. One of the best defenses against COVID-19 is of course the vaccine. But children under 12 cannot yet receive this. They are literally sitting ducks for infection. The data about the Delta variant debunks the oft-discussed argument that children do not get severely ill from COVID-19. The pediatric IU is full in some regions of our country. That's the reality. Thus, social distancing and masking remain our best defense against infection and suffering for children. We can see right now, schools are opening in the South for a few weeks. What's going on there? Not pretty. Infection is spreading like wildfire in schools. And besides the bodily harm this is causing, our children, once again, are experiencing educational disruption due to mass quarantines. I desperately want my daughter to attend school in person with basic safety precautions in place. We haven't been in person since March 2020, and this has caused much hardship for my family. We took on the hardship for the safety of both our families and the people in this community. We care about others and see ourselves as part of a community. We reject the selfish notion that so many among us seem to have taken, I can do whatever I want, when I want, and I won't consider other people. It is our understanding that Springfield fostered this belief too. After all, in your mission statement, it says, have a priority on people so that students are fully prepared to positively contribute to our society. Positively contributing at the bare minimum is having care and empathy, protecting public health, especially for our most vulnerable populations. So now I implore you, board, do the right thing for our children. They depend on us as adults to make decisions to protect them. To make masks optional is not protecting them. It is kowtowing to a vocal minority that doesn't believe in basic scientific fact and making a part of an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could please remember, put your name and address in there. And if the next speaker will come up. If you could just move aside with that while the next speaker gets started, if you're not finished. No, 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 absolutely not.
Chiosalas.
Go ahead.
44 Woodley Drive. I spent the past two weeks researching for this meeting. I sent my speech to the board earlier today because I didn't know if I'd get a chance to, to speak. Better? Better. There we go. I'm not going to read it. You guys have heard data from everybody. Anyone can make data mean whatever they want. It doesn't matter what I say. I'm not a college professor. Okay? I'm not a scientist. But I'm with Coach back there who spoke a little bit earlier about we can do logical things to help protect our kids. I know my children are in K through six. They were in school since November. You were able to space them out five to six feet in their classroom, similar to how they're spaced out in the cafeteria where they can take their mask off. Half of them wore the mask when they're in the high capacity areas in the hallways, moving it out to the bus. But once they sit down at their desk, let them take it off. They're spaced out from the other kids. Continue the hand washing, the hand sanitizing. In the intermediate school, my son was in a pod. So in recess, they only played with their classroom. Continue all those measures. We have become so tribal. I've been watching it here today, even as people are walking in, half of us from one side of the room, half of us on the other, like it's a wedding. Okay? And we're not allowed to cross over. We can find compromise for the sake of our children. I think we need to step up and find that amongst ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could come on up, I, I just been trying to get everybody in. So if you want to get started with your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Grossman. I live at 64 Page Lane, Phoenixville, PA, 19460. Okay. So I'm here tonight to talk about all this stuff that's going on with the masks. I personally think that I am the best equipped to decide whether my kid needs to wear a mask and not some DC bureaucrat or local authorities. No disrespect to you guys. Um, what I do hear is people talking about their neighbors and neighboring schools and neighboring schools. I don't know where they're coming from, what they're listening to. All I'm hearing is confusion everywhere. How about Central Bucks? Central Bucks decided to have their kids have optional masks. Nobody mentioned them tonight. And I also would like to point out, every one of you who spoke with a mask tonight, I could barely make out one word that you said. How about my kids? How are they going to understand what the hell their teachers are saying if they, sorry, sorry, sorry. Because if we can't understand you here in a conversation like this, how are the kids going to be able to learn when they're muscled like? That's what I heard today. And that's what my kids are going to hear. Another point I'd like to make is, you know, the restaurants, okay? You have to take your mask off at a restaurant to eat. Why can't my kids sitting at their desk for eight hours a day take their mask off if they're, if they're spread out? If you can sit at a restaurant and eat and drink your wine and your beer and your alcohol, sitting there without a mask on, my kids should be able to sit in a classroom without a mask on. Tennessee, Louisiana, Florida, Texas, all banned mask mandates. You know what I'm hearing on the news? Oh my gosh, oh my gosh, the, the variants there, they're, you know, they're going to get everybody. Then you know what the next date is? Very quietly, they're retracting everything they've said. The hospitals aren't filled. Kids are not getting sick. I have friends and family members that live in these states. It's lies. We're being lied to. Okay? Another thing I'd like to make a point of.
Okay, let me, let me just, let me just read you back to you for a second. I just want to remind you that you're making a comment to the board. So if you could kind of move in our direction with that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, sorry. Every day we're hearing that this Delta variant virus is spreading. Where's the test? They're getting rid of the PCR test as of December 31st, 2021, because they can't decipher between COVID and the flu. I've yet to see a test for this damn Delta virus that's coming and taking over the world and ruining our lives again. I think it's very suspect that all of a sudden, when we got our lives back and we're happy and we're moving forward, this Delta variant comes out and takes everything away from us. I don't believe it. I just think it's something to control us. Um, okay, I lost my train of thought here. Um, I got 10 seconds. I don't know. I just think that we should have everything optional or no mask at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Mary Jo McNamara, 187 Abbey Drive, Warriorsford, PA, 19468. So I have a bunch of pages of facts and data here. I'm also not going to read them. I think you've heard them. People can skew data the, the, either way that they want to skew it, right? We can, we've heard that all over the place. I would like to point out a couple of things though. I want to stress.
That needs to go back up on the podium, please.
I want to stress the point of parental choice. So I understand that putting my child in a school, the school's obligation is to keep my child safe. My obligation is to keep my health choices for my child. That's my obligation to my child. There are other local districts that have supported parental choice concerning masks. Boyer Town, Daniel Boone, Twin Valley, Oxford, Victoria, Avon Grove, I think Bucks. We know that schools aren't going to have punitive consequences from the Department of Health. We know that funding won't be withheld. We know that schools, if schools choose not to mask students or test students for COVID or have vaccine clinics, they won't be punitive damage. But there could be evidence, and it looks like there could be evidence that schools would be likely sued for wearing masks and what the obligations and what the, what the damages caused by masks could be. If there's more harm perceived, lack of mitigation protocols, which is much harder to prove. The other thing I wanted to point up is the plan that the CDC recommends. We all talk about taking the CDC recommendations. The plan the CDC recommends to quarantine unvaccinated versus vaccinated, I don't even know how you would implement that, right? Vaccinated doesn't get quarantined, even though they're exposed. Unvaccinated gets quarantined if they're exposed, if they have it. The rules are like spaghetti, worse than last year, that you can take apart. I, I actually think it's almost discriminatory. It exposes kids' private religious and medical information to the class. It just feels discriminatory to me. We're all in it together. I, I admire folks that want masking. I admire folks that don't want masking. I need masking as an optional choice for my child. I think it's the right thing to do. I don't think that there's anything out there from a data perspective, from a findings perspective. I just put my kid in a college in Louisiana, which most of you know is the highest COVID-19 state in the Union. And his school is mask optional. And they are going for vaccination mandate as soon as the FDA approves it, and people are already exempting out of it. So I would just urge the board, we're all in it together. We respect the board immensely over the past couple of years. Further back, I wasn't really as engaged. But I do respect all of you, and I just would urge you to listen, loud voices or not. Your parental community wants mask optional and are willing to take that risk for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, it is 8:30. And as I had said, that I would switch over to Zoom at this point to allow the people on Zoom to share their thoughts with us. If we can come back to you after we go to Zoom, then we, well, I believe there are five of you that are still in line there, if I'm, I'm counting right. Okay, so you could just remember your positions there and either feel free to stay there. It could be a while or return to your seat and we'll try to get back to you after I hear from some of the people that are on Zoom. Thank you. I, I understand that. I did say 8:30. Thank you. So Rich, are you ready to go with comments there? Thank you.
Leanna Schuster, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
We're going to have to do this where, you know, there's maybe a five-second countdown. If somebody doesn't come on, we need to move on to the next. There are a number of hands raised and I don't want to short other people.
Okay, I apologize. I thought I was unmuted. I was pressing on your timer screen, not on my screen. I apologize.
Your name and address.
Leanna Schuster, 409 Nottingham Way, Collegeville. You were being asked to make a difficult decision today. I urge you to keep the health of our students and of the surrounding community as your number one priority. Let's be honest here. I don't like masks. I don't know anyone who likes wearing a mask. I don't always enjoy the feeling of a seatbelt, but I wear it every time I get in the car. Masks may be annoying, but they're not difficult to use and are a very small price to pay to protect our community and get our children back to school safely. The Delta variant of COVID-19 transmits more than twice as easily as the original strain. Many studies have verified that the safest scenario, case of accidental COVID exposure, is for both individuals to be wearing masks. We're not just talking about preventing the most serious cases that prevent hospitalization. At least half of COVID patients have experienced lingering physical effects for at least three months. Lung damage, heart damage, loss of taste and smell, chronic fatigue, dizziness, insomnia, just a few of the potential health effects that I do not want to see my friends or family members suffer. This board has the power to mandate masks in the schools, just like it has mandated a dress code about hats and spaghetti straps for decades. And just like many of your neighboring school doors have already done. This is not about politics. It's about public health and safety. Mandating masks for all students and staff K through 12 gives us the best chance of schools remaining open in person. The best chance of sports teams completing their full season. And the best chance of our children remaining out of the hospital. Please vote for full masking throughout all Springfield schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Deborah Adi Roy. You may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Deborah Adi Roy from 203 Holstein Drive, Collegeville, Pennsylvania. My comments are related to the same agenda item as everyone else. When someone gets sick and visits a doctor, the doctor evaluates the medical issue and writes up a prescription script. The patient does not write the prescription. So I am surprised to see a survey asking the parents whether masks should be optional or mandatory in schools. Medical experts, epidemiologists, school nurses should be assisting the administration in deciding the appropriate mask policy, not non-medical parents. Most of us here may disagree on many things, but we all agree that kids learn best when in school, with other kids and face-to-face with their teachers, not via Zoom. To keep schools open safely, based on experts, if universal masking is one of the tools at our disposal, that's exactly what you need to mandate. Let's focus on the end goal here. Send kids to school and keep Springfield open. Those parents who feel kids will not be able to handle masks all day, remember how you taught your toddler to be in the car seat with seatbelts on, sometimes for hours on the highway. They got used to the idea because you, as parent, taught them the importance of seatbelts with a positive mindset and explained to them the benefits of the same. No one really enjoys wearing a mask, but a good-fitted mask reduces the virus spread drastically. That will mean that schools will be less disrupted when someone gets sick. Without any asynchronous virtual option, sick kids will need quarantine, to be quarantined for days, missing out on education and sports. It will be a big hassle for the administration for even contact tracing. I implore all of you with voting power, please listen to your conscience, follow the data, forget politics for the greater good, and vote for universal masking across all grades and K through 12 and the staff. So we can all keep Springfield open and do the best for our kids. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Rich, next.
Jennifer B., you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Bravort. My address is 351 Woodland Drive, Collegeville, Pennsylvania, 1946. I'm asking today that you make mask-wearing mandate mandatory for K through sixth grade students. I know that all of our educators at Springfield are working to support the development of young citizens who can listen to other community members with empathy and compassion. This current debate over masks is one of those real-life moments adults and elected officials can model the self-sacrifice it takes to lead in a community. Please make masks mandatory because it shows kindness and support for the most, most vulnerable of our community. It models for Springfield children that small actions like wearing a mask do make a big difference to their friends and classmates. And most importantly, it will show our children how to be brave, empathetic, and compassionate in these uncertain times. Thank you for all the work you do on behalf of our community.
Thank you. We are not doing this from the audience. We are not doing this from the audience. Okay, thank you. Officer, please see him out. Officer, please see him out. Thank you. We're moving on to the next speaker, please.
Allison O'Brien, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last.
If there's going to be noise from the room, then I will adjourn the meeting. Otherwise, we will have an orderly meeting and we will hear additional comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison O'Brien, 505 Andover Lane, Collegeville, 19426. I'm just wondering if someone could please make it make sense to me why the board is just recommending masking and not requiring it. In June, when federal and local mask mandates were lifted, the board voted, quote, "Masks would be required for K through six students and staff until vaccines are approved for this age group and/or health recommendations change to support unmasking for all students and staff regardless of vaccination status," end quote. Well, last time I checked, there is no vaccine available for kids K through six and no health recommendations have changed to support unmasking. In fact, now the WHO, CDC, PA Department of Education, PA Department of Health, Montgomery County Department of Health, and the A, American Academy of Pediatrics are all stating that children and staff should all be masked regardless of vaccination status. So please explain to me why the school board is now just recommending masks and not requiring them when no vaccine is available and no health recommendations have changed since June. We know universal masking works. The CDC put out a study from schools last year that showed that universal mask-wearing is an effective prevention strategy. And when universal mask use is inconsistent, outbreaks occur. School has been in session for several weeks in other states and we're already seeing outbreaks at school and schools closing in districts where masks are optional. However, in the same states where masks are required, schools are going on without interruption. With the Delta variant spreading now more. With the Delta variant spreading now more than ever is the time we need to protect our kids. All last year, we heard at the board meetings how unaffected kids were by COVID. But now more than ninety percent of COVID cases in children are due to the Delta variant, a variant that is largely affecting the unvaccinated and therefore our children. Estimates show ten percent of kids who get COVID will have chronic symptoms, which may include cardiac conditions, decreased lung function, and functional abnormalities. Please make this make sense to me. Explain to me how now, when COVID is affecting children, we are going to unmask children and make school a less safe place to be. Explain to me how people fought last year to have kids in school, but now we're going to continuously interrupt the school year with outbreaks and closures. Make it make sense how the board agreed to protect our kids in June when cases were relatively low. And now that we have a variant dangerous to kids, we have a board that seemingly changes their mind for no reason. And has anyone asked what the nurses think or what the staff thinks? Please protect our children and don't make this year a disruptive one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Christine D., you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Jambowski, three ten Fourth Avenue, Montclair. I am asking you to please change the health and safety plan to require, not recommend, universal masking for all students and staff K to twelve. I'm disheartened at how politicized a safety protocol against a deadly virus has become. The virus is the enemy here and we must do everything we can to keep our student safe from getting sick. We see what's happening in other parts of the U.S. in schools where masks are optional. Closures within the first week, no staff or subs to teach, hundreds of students and staff quarantining, and students getting sick, being hospitalized, and sadly, both students and staff in some cases dying. We are seeing an overall increase in youth hospitalizations and deaths with the Delta variant. We are not special. Any opportunity that we give to this virus to spread, it will take, especially in our elementary buildings where the entire student body is not eligible yet for vaccination. It is our job as educators, administrators, parents, and community members to do all we can to keep students safe and in school. In this season, universal masks are the primary part of the safety protocols that have been deemed essential to keep students healthy. The same as a mouthguard for field hockey or a helmet for football. We know these things in sports work and that kids need to wear them in order to play and prevent serious injury. We don't question this. We follow the experts. No parent wants to have a sick or hurt kid and look back and say, man, I wish I would have just done this one thing. Universal masks are our safety gear this fall and the school year for all. So please, I urge you to protect our children and please change the health and safety plan to require masks for all students and staff K to twelve this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Kim. Kim Stockay, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Kim Stockay for Elliott Court, Royersford, speaking on Agenda Item Two A. As we go into this next school year, we all had hoped that the pandemic situation would be under control and we would have a semblance of normalcy. Well, that's not the case, unfortunately, and we cannot open schools with plans that do less to protect our kids, staff, and community as compared to what was implemented last year, especially with what we know and also what we don't know about Delta. Must do the same or more as we did last year, including universal masking and also bringing back the flexibility for families to choose between in-person and virtual learning. Implement anything less than what was in place last year is unconscionable. And I plead you that you err on the side of caution and doing too much to protect our kids, staff, and community rather than doing too little and regretting the decision later. With regard to Item Two A on the agenda as an action item tonight, I have to point out that it needs to be updated before you act on it. As written now with the word "recommend" that students, staff, and kindergarten K through twelve wear appropriate face coverings while indoors during school activities, you must change this language to state that face coverings are required, not simply recommended. And this needs to be extended to all school-related activities such as marching band or other school-sponsored activities covered by the best practices of athletics and marching band equipment. If this action item passes as it's written now, you're essentially saying that masks are optional for all students and staff K to twelve, which is a step backwards from the vote that you took in June that required masks for students and staff in K to six as this population of kids cannot be vaccinated yet. Do not take this step backwards and do less. Just because our state and county governments have not set any mandates to prevent or control this current surge and have instead pushed these decisions down to the school board level yet again, this does not absolve you of the duty that you have to provide the safest possible learning environment for our students and to safeguard our community. You can and you must step up to do more in the absence of leadership at the county and state level. We see firsthand the results of the recommendations versus requirements. The softer language of "recommended" as opposed to "required" has gotten us to where we were in from late May and early June with low numbers to where we are today with ninety percent of the country in substantial or high transmission levels, including Montgomery County. Numbers are continuing to rise and healthcare systems are on the brink of collapse. The honor system has clearly failed and there is no reason to believe it will somehow magically work here within the Springfield district boundaries. Please change and strengthen the language in the action items to state masks are required for students and staff K to twelve. Apply this to.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Emily, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hello, my name is Emily Lucier. I live at Seven Mile Metropolis, Royersford. I'd like to speak on Section Two A. I'd like the board to consider a motion to revise the language so that it says masks that are required. I'm asking this because it is not only recommended by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, but also the PA DOH. And we must consider our community of K through six and also all of our communities. Our most vulnerable students and also all of our individuals in our community will be more vulnerably exposed if we do not have masking. There have been studies done that show there are thirty-seven percent lower chance of incidence when schools require masking. That is a huge, huge rate. We must consider what we can do to improve. And I have not heard from the board what we are planning to have in place when all students required are required back in school. Last year, we had both virtual as well as in-person. Now, we heard from a student earlier and she said that she was not able to maintain social distancing. If we have all students back without the option of virtual, it's clear that there will be even less ability to maintain that six-foot distance. And without the masking, how are we going to be able to maintain contact tracing, social distancing? We need to be able to have safe measures in place to be able to work together to make sure that our children feel safe and stay safe. I urge you to consider masking as a top priority and then work on the ventilation, the social distancing, the crowding in the hallways, the steps to ensure that all students and staff, the nursing, the athletics can do what they need so that the mental health is there because the mental health is important too. Making sure that the students who are not feeling comfortable because now they have to wear masks can take breaks when they need breaks so that we can all work together to ensure that the students stay safe, but most importantly, stay healthy and mentally healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Lauren Day, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, this is Lauren Day, fifty-seven Greenbrier Drive in Phoenixville. I want to first thank the board for serving during such a difficult time. I want to say that I know all parents want their children back in school in person safely. The only way to accomplish that is by universal masking for all students and staff in at least K to six. I know some parents who are against masking want to say, I should keep my child home. I'm saying this year, I want to send my child. Maybe they should keep their kids home if they don't want to wear a mask. We're following the rules by career professionals. We should be able to send our kids into school safe. Montgomery County is now substantial spread and has a mask mandate in county buildings. This tells us we should have a mask mandate in our schools where the children are not vaccinated. If you look at the numbers for Springfield School District specifically, we are in a worse place than at the end of the school year when the board voted to require masks for K to six. Data specific to Springfield can be found on Montgomery County's website. Here are some of it. Weekending six seventeen, Limerick, Royersford, zero cases per one hundred thousand people. Upper Providence, sixteen point nine six cases per one hundred thousand. Weekending six twenty-four, Limerick, Royersford, Upper Providence, zero cases. Weekending seven one, Limerick, five point three cases, Royersford, zero, Upper Providence, zero. Then come weekending seven twenty-nine, Limerick, thirty-one point seven nine per cases per one hundred thousand people. Royersford, sixty-two point eight, sixty-two point eight-five per one hundred thousand people. Upper Providence, sixteen point nine six. And weekending eight-five, Limerick, twenty-one point nineteen, Royersford, twenty-nine-five, and Upper Providence, forty-six point six-three per cases per one hundred thousand people. As you can see, it would be negligent to put our students in a situation where the spread in Springfield alone is high, let alone in Montgomery County. I ask you to please make the choice to keep students safe. My mask protects you and your mask protects me. If we allow mask optional in school, we will have outbreaks. We are seeing outbreaks in schools that mask optional are now virtual after their first weeks of school. Having universal masking will keep the kids in school and not virtual. Lastly, all of our neighboring districts are requiring masks for the upcoming school year. These districts include PV, Methacton, Norristown, Pottstown, Phoenixville, Abington, Lower Marion, Springfield, Cheltenham, Colonial, Upper Dublin, West Higgin, Great Valley, and Westchester. Please give our students the opportunity to return to in-person learning safely. I think all parents can agree on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Aparna Tula, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Good evening. My name is Aparna Tula, address forty-nine Goldfinch Circle in Phoenixville. I'm speaking regarding Agenda Item Two A. I urge the board to amend Two A and vote on requiring masks and not just recommending masks, especially while being indoors. Let's keep our decision-making simple here. Let's bring our focus back to our priorities. We need to get back to in-person schooling this year with minimal interruptions while keeping in mind the safety and health of all individuals. All neighboring school districts, including PV, Methacton, and Phoenixville, are requiring masks for these same reasons. Given the circumstances, getting back to some normalcy is only possible if we reinstate masks for everyone when we can socially distance while indoors, regardless of vaccination status. Staff and students K to twelve must be required to wear masks while indoors. I understand there are exceptions for students that have mental health issues or disabilities that prevent them from keeping masks on. Let's put in a process where we allow exceptions. For others that simply choose not to wear masks, they can choose the cyber option. But if we don't take every precaution this school year, then students will need to quarantine frequently. The buildings will need to close often, increasing the need to bring back virtual options on a consistent basis, and we will have yet another year of chaos. So please note, masking isn't a question of personal choice. It is a matter of public health. Everyone should be taking precautions to stop the spread and that is the only way to get out of this as a community. Montgomery County is back to being in the substantial category for community transmission. Also note that the Delta variant is more contagious than the original virus. Individuals infected with Delta could have viral loads that are over a thousand times higher than those in people infected with the original strain. This is the reason why the vaccinated and the asymptomatic as well are able to spread this variant faster. Everyone wearing masks will only help. I believe masked individuals are excluded as close contacts, so that should help as well. Once again, let's focus on keeping the schools open. Let's have extracurriculars and events like we did in prior years. So let's require masks for everyone and where we can socially distance while indoors, regardless of age or vaccination status. We can revisit this mandate when the transmission is back to low in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Jason Sheehan, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Jason Sheehan, six fifty Doe Court, Royersford. I didn't really want to have to call in tonight. I thought that with the rising case positivity in the county and the rising numbers of COVID patients in the hospital that a school board, any school board, would be falling all over itself to try and protect the children in the community it serves. But here we are. I know you're all smart people. I know you've already spent more time thinking about this pandemic and its effects on our community than anyone would want to. You all know what needs to be done to protect our kids. A universal mask requirement for all students to cut down on infections that will spread and be carried back into our homes and our neighborhoods. You know this is the safest, sanest way to proceed. And that's what bothers me because if you know the right thing to do but still do something else, that's a choice. And if you make that choice, then the absolute moral cowardice of caving to the bullying threats and loud voices of the few will be the legacy of your time on this board. The science is clear. The threat of the Delta variant is inarguable. That some of you on this board might choose to spend the lives of our children for your own political benefit is reprehensible. But you still have a chance to do the right thing to protect this community. And I know it's a hard choice. The choices that really matter are never easy. So what you have to ask yourself tonight is, are you brave enough to stand briefly against those who will whine and threaten you over a decision to protect even the children of those who disagree? Or will you spend the rest of your life haunted by the sound of hospital respirators and the names of the children you might put there with your vote tonight? Please do the right thing. Require universal masking. Our kids are depending on you. Thank you.
Next, please.
Kathleen Russo, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Katie Russo, one sixty Oak Creek Drive, Royersford, commenting on Agenda Item Two A. Regardless of how you personally feel about COVID-19 vaccinations or masks, the reality is that universal indoor masking will provide consistency for our students and teachers. Based on the current Montgomery County COVID-19 exposure quarantine procedures, masking is our best bet to get the most students back to in-person learning and keep them there with limited disruption. If you support the physical and mental well-being of Springfield students, providing a consistent in-person learning environment is key. For those who prefer not to wear a mask, who do not see it as a way to help protect the community, especially those of the community who cannot be vaccinated, there are alternative educational pathways that allow a choice in masking. For those who cannot mask for legitimate medical reasons, I expect they will be accommodated through the existing protocols. As for the eternal question, is it a mandate? It's true. There is not currently a state or county mandate for indoor masking in schools. It has been left up to you to make the mandate for the district based on the expert guidance. Please consider all of the families that opted for virtual and cyber learning last year. They never really wanted to be out of the classroom but made that difficult choice for their families during such an uncertain time. Please choose to get all the students back to in-person learning in a consistent and safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Sean Day, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, good evening. This is Sean Day, fifty-seven Greenbrier Drive, Phoenixville, PA, one nine four six zero. I would like to speak to the Agenda Item Two A. My family and I live in Region One. My daughter is entering into second grade at Oaks as well as my son, who's entering into kindergarten. Like the first, thank you all board for contributing your time and talents to guiding our district. I know that this is difficult and being a public servant is never easy, especially during a time like COVID. If you don't know where you are going, any road will take you there. Is a well-known lesson from Alice in Wonderland that I rely upon in my professional life as an attorney as well as a compliance executive and then in my personal life as a husband and a father. And so one of the things that I always ask is, what is the end goal? Or what does success look like when it comes to the safety plan? The goal is not for one political philosophy to claim victory over another. And success is not achieved if one convinces anyone that their viewpoint is better than another's viewpoint. The goal, the end goal is to have all of our children, teachers, and support staff return to school in person and to do it safely. Anything that doesn't move us closer Anything that doesn't move us closer to achieving that goal is a distraction and frankly, a waste of time. With this being the goal, how do we achieve our goal? Again, and I emphasize the again because we did this last year. I had to look at the calendar to make sure it wasn't August twenty twenty instead it's twenty twenty-one, but yet we're still doing this again. Let's not forget, we figured this all out last year. Last year, we did not have the benefit of experience or the hindsight to know if safety plans would help or undermine our ability to achieve our goals. We didn't have any vaccines. We were shut down. We were stuck in our houses, couldn't even get grocery, toilet paper, or paper towels. Think about that, guys. Despite all of this, we still achieved our goal, which was to get our kids in school in person and safely. And for this year, we had the benefit of seeing how other school districts around the country have enacted their twenty twenty-one plans and see how they're playing out and whether they took advantage of their own hindsight and experience. I'm not advocating for anything except for the school board to roll forward the strategy that was employed at the beginning of last school year and where there were improvements that are needed, you know, make those improvements. It achieved our goal. Let's exploit our experience and the plan already created and show everyone why Springfield is such a highly respected and sought-after school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Kate Doyle, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Can you hear me? Kate Doyle, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Kate Doyle, three ten Woodland Drive, Collegeville, PA. I'm commenting on Agenda Item two A. Per the American Rescue Plan Act, the district is required to document how it will support the prevention and mitigation policies in line with the most up-to-date guidance from the CDC to continuously and safely open. The district must also review and update their plans whenever there are significant changes to the CDC recommendations for schools. On August fourth, CDC guidance was updated to recommend universal indoor masking for all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to schools, regardless of vaccination status, a significant change. Tonight's proposed amendment to the Health and Safety Plan is in direct conflict with the requirements of the ARPESR grant that requires the district to be in line with the most up-to-date guidance of the CDC, not mandate, guidance of the CDC. Why is the board proposing to institute less preventative measures now that our region has higher transmission rates than when the board required masking in K through six, for K through six in June? The layered approach used last year was effective at limiting in-school transmission. The demonstrated success of those mitigation strategies, as mentioned by the previous speaker, in our own buildings provides significant evidence in support of implementing them now that we have returned to higher transmission rates. In addition, the proposed revision will keep students, I'm sorry, will prevent students from in-person learning. Only recommending masks will result in a higher number of students required to quarantine. Per the Monco updated Quarantine Guidance, if students are wearing, if a student is wearing a mask during exposure, they do not need to quarantine as long as they are, they were three feet of separation and are not symptomatic. Universal masking will keep the most number of students in the building for in-person learning. Please demonstrate bravery and commit to the health and safety of the students. You are the governing body. I'm sorry that it hasn't been mandated and they've put this decision on you. But you are the governing body that has the authority to implement all of the mitigation strategies to ensure the greatest level of protection to students and staff in a consistent learning environment. And please, at a minimum, maintain the current Health and Safety Plan that requires masking for the most vulnerable K through six students until vaccinations are available. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment, it's nine oh four, I believe, right now. We're going to wrap this up at nine twenty-five because we started at eight thirty and we had done the first segment of public comment from seven thirty-five to eight thirty. So I just want to be fair, we're going to wrap it up at nine twenty-five and then I'd like to take a five-minute recess for us just to stretch and refresh before we come back to the agenda.
Hibakalifa, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Hibakalifa, two O two Spring Lane in Royersford. I'd like to echo what many of the other parents have stated. We need to reword the Agenda Item. It needs to be mandated, the masks, they have to be mandated. My family personally, we're high, all of us, we cannot take the vaccine for health reasons. And last year, we opted for cyber schooling for our kids, which, let's say it failed miserably, in part for my fourth grade son who was discriminated against for his religion. And we went with a virtual as our alternative, which is now not even an option for us. And that worked out fine, but again, it's not an option this year. Wearing a mask, although it is of course ideal, of course, it bothers our kids, it bothers us as adults as well, but it's the safe thing to do. It's better to be safe than sorry. That's the way I see it. The current, you know, three-foot social distancing situation, it's not, to me, that's personal space. It's not really social distancing. You know, when I'm in traffic with anybody, I don't stand anywhere closer than three feet from them. Numbers, as we know, since June, and now if we're comparing now, much worse. Delta virus affects kids way more than the original, I'm going to say, strain did. We need to try and prevent our kids from ping-ponging in between in-person and virtual learning where, you know, if there's a case or more, we're going to have to go virtual and then come back to school and then go virtual and then come back to school. That's unreasonable. I personally have had several family members die of COVID over the past few months, and it's been horrible, to say the least. So I don't want to see this happening to any of my two kids or any of your kids either. And the schools that have gone, the states that have gone back to school over the past couple of weeks, I personally know a lot of kids who got ill. They're my friends' kids in other states. They have gotten ill and it's very serious. And some of those kids are high-risk or their parents are high-risk. So we don't want to be in this situation. The way I see it, wearing a mask helps those of us who need it. And if you don't need it, or you feel like you don't need it, or you believe that it's unnecessary, it won't hurt. And if we're talking about the emotional aspect, well, yeah, of course, it's not ideal. But like I tell my son, you have to wear a helmet, you know, during the hot summer months while you're biking. And he does. We wear our seat belts when we go out in the cars. You know, it's not ideal, it's necessary. You know, ideally, you don't want to be restricted. But that's not the case here. Masking, in my opinion, is a matter of public health and responsibility. It's not just a personal choice. It's a very, very selfish thing for everyone to say, or, you know, some people to say that we don't need those masks. You don't need them. Maybe this year, you should be the ones.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Matthew Blank, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Matthew Blank, five Crestwood Court, Phoenixville, PA. I'm a new dad in the Springfield School District. My daughter's going to kindergarten next year. And I believe in freedom and the right to choose. And knowing what happened to my daughter going through pre-K with wearing the mask and the effects that it's had on children psychologically have been very detrimental to nonverbal communication and learning cues. So I please ask the board to keep the recommendation, but not ask for a mask mandate because of what we're doing to teach our children to communicate with each other and the ability to read faces and understand nonverbal communications. I do not believe that the masks universally will help. And I believe that if you are afraid and you'd like your children to wear a mask, please do so. However, don't make the rest of us too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
DeCask, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Doris Casino, one twenty-one Ramsgate Drive in Phoenixville. I also want to reiterate what the last person said. I'm a pediatrician. I've got twenty years of experience. I worked as a hospitalist this past year. I mean, I've worked for many years as a hospitalist. I can tell you what we've seen in the past year. In my hospital, the absolute worst impact of the pandemic has been on children and has been with social isolation, depression, suicide, and not COVID. So much so that kids have had to wait up to three or more days in our ER for an open mental health hospital bed or even psychological evaluation. This year, I've seen kids as young as eight coming into our ER with suicidal intentions. Wearing masks is incredibly socially isolating for them. Kids need to see faces from the youngest through teenagers. Facial expressions and smiles are a core necessity for emotional and social development. And even more important for our kids with special needs. So another year without that will be devastating for our children. We can't ignore the needs of, the social needs of our kids. A mask mandate is not without harm. I hear a lot of that and it is not without harm. So I'm asking you, let us make the choice, let the parents choose what they want, which is best for their children. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Lisa DiNanzio, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Yes, good evening. My name's Lisa DiNanzio, nine eleven Menonite Road, Royersford, one nine four six eight. In regard to item two A, I am imploring the board to please mandate the mask-wearing all grades K to twelve. Talking about anxiety, social depression, and withdrawal, my kids were at the height of it last year with the hybrid learning. It just didn't work. They need to be back in school. If we have any hope of keeping our kids in school five days a week this year, we need to mandate the mask. The virus is no joke. I lost a friend to it in January and I currently have a friend sick with it now. So in order to keep it at bay, we're in this together, whether we want to wear a mask or we don't. Let's do what's good for the common community and all of us mask up and do the right thing. We have to protect students, teachers, and bus drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Manish Fohal, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, this is Manish Fohal. I am a resident of three seventy Beechfield Way, Collegeville, Pennsylvania, one nine four two six. And I'm commenting on Agenda Item two A. I'm recommending that we change the language to read mask mandatory versus recommended. When did physical and mental health of children become debatable and political? It is a new law when we clap if we hear an opposing view and if we have an appeasing view and laugh when we hear an equally strong but opposing view. Science should prevail and no one should be allowed to twist facts for personal or political gains. Fact is, it is beyond doubt that mask mandate is as much for protecting you as it is for protecting others. That is an irrefutable fact and here we are debating about fifteen percent versus eighty-five percent efficacy rates. Fact is, researchers have predicted that eighty to ninety percent of population wearing masks would do more to reduce COVID-19 spread than a strict lockdown. The latest forecast from National Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation suggests that so many deaths could have been prevented if ninety-five percent of the people wore masks in public. And so we can keep on arguing about facts, we can keep on giving facts or throwing facts at each other. And is this now coming down to whose facts have a stronger vote bank? I think we should just let science talk. We should let the schools open up with mask mandatory from K to twelve to protect the children and safely allow them to have a safe passage through school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Shane O'Brien, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, my name is Shane O'Brien, five oh five Andover Lane, Collegeville, PA, one nine four two six. I'm commenting on Agenda Item two A. As a scientist, I have reviewed several peer-reviewed journal articles investigating the efficacy effectiveness of face coverings. The majority of the studies conclude that the masks are part of the effective strategy to prevent spread of SARS-CoV-2. While they aren't perfect, high compliance of mask-wearing along with other preventive measure provides the best chance for a non-interupted school year and protection from a virus where the biology is still not fully understood. The previous guidelines established in June provided the most protection for the group that are currently ineligible for vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Rohit G., you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hey, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. I am Rohit Kossami, fifty-eight Hunt Club Drive, Collegeville. I'm commenting on Agenda Item two A. I want to, I want to bring, talk about three pointers. One of them is what has changed since last year and now with respect to kids under twelve years of age? Nothing has changed for them. There was no vaccine when we debated this on twentieth of August last year and still there is no vaccine, number one, and that's a fact. Number two, virus has mutated and as we speak and as we stand here, we do not have much confirmed information about Delta variants and how it is impacting. It is still evolving. We are in very early stages. There are countries who have the data to say how much contagious Delta variant is. So we are basing our decision at this point on not too much confirmed information. And third point, one good thing that board gave us last year was it gave a power to individual parents to choose what they want, right? You guys gave virtual, you guys gave hybrid and in-person, so individual parents have that choice. We have taken away that choice. I'm surprised this year. Remember how much we debated and voted for technology acquisition, how we are requiring Canvas to support future needs of hybrid learnings and things like that? Please don't get me wrong, I am not opting for a hybrid learning. But at the same time, what I'm saying is, we have taken back something from parents of kids under twelve years, right? And with no vaccine available, I am requesting board to mandate masking policy universally. Other point I want to talk about is lack of policy around anti-bullying for the kids who are wearing masks versus the ones who are not wearing it. There is no consistent policy, at least what I have seen. We want a universal, consistent policy to protect our kids, no matter they are under twelve or they are over twelve. And it's a community has to come together and protect each one. Numbers between June and now have gone, to an extent, that CDC also recommending, recommended indoor masking policy. We are not here to listen to individual emotional comments. It's a matter of life and death. I'm surprised and shocked hearing individual comments that went public half an hour back saying majority obviously want optional. None of the audience should be saying.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
John Clements, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, this is John Clements, thirty-one Starmont Way, Collegeville, one nine four two six. And I'm commenting on Agenda Item two A. And I'd like to thank the board for their efforts in making policy that affects the safety of our children, especially where local governments have abdicated responsibility. The board should please unambiguously, unhesitatingly, and consistently follow the guidelines of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. The board should require universal masking of all students, staff, and visitors ages two and over. And I can see how upset many parents are that their children should have to wear a mask for what is actually two-way protection themselves and the community. And therefore, I'd like to see if there are options proposed to the board that they consider synchronous virtual schooling this year for students of parents who don't want their children to wear masks and for students, and for students whose parents feel that they may have a high-risk child who should not attend in person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Jayavi, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address. Jayavi, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state.
Hi, it's Kavita.
Hi, it's Kavita Chirilamchala. I am from one zero three Caitlin Drive, Collegeville, Pennsylvania. I'm commenting on agenda item two A. I'm not going to quote from any studies, but I would like to say only a couple of things. Without mask mandatory, we are going to increase the chance of COVID spread as the kids will be endowed and with minimum social distance. This will increase school disruptions impacting these grades. As we all want our kids to be in school and complete their school years successfully, I request board to make mask mandatory not optional. Looking back as last year, with the mask mandatory, we have seen only a few students and staff members getting affected. If without masks now or optional masking, we can see the option of increasing those cases higher. So my mask will protect you and yours will protect me. So let's be protect each other and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Usha, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is, yeah, thank you. I'm commenting on agenda item two A. I'm Usha Galapali from one 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 Caitlin Drive, Collegeville. I have a child in intermediate school that's not vaccinated and one, I have one in high school that's vaccinated. I want my intermediate schooler to wear a mask so that he can protect himself and his friends. And I want my high schooler who is vaccinated and I think well protected also to wear a mask because that would, so that she can protect her friends. We cannot fight this virus if we don't work together to protect each other. This should not be a political discussion. This is about our children's, our teachers and our school staff safety. I implore the board to mandate masks so that we can protect our children and give them an opportunity to attend classes in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll take one more comment from the Zoom, please.
Heather Staley, you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, my name's Heather Staley, four twelve New Street, Spring City, PA. I just wanted to pose a question. I know I'm not going to get an answer, but if the summer schools and other things have been going well with this as well as some of the extracurriculars banned football and other things, and they've been able to be handling this with a mask optional situation, then I'd like to know where the board stands with that. I know I won't get an answer. The other thing I would also like to speak to is something that the hospitalist brought up, someone who works on the front lines like myself. I'm a paramedic. I have seen so many kids who have horrible depression, have been cutting themselves, taking drugs, overdosing, suicides. It takes a toll on us frontline employees as well when we have to see kids who shouldn't be dealing with these things telling us how isolated they feel because of masking, social distancing, isolation. Yes, I understand that people are afraid of the virus. Yes, I understand the Delta variant is more contagious, but it's less virulent. A lot of the things that people are saying, like someone said recently, is that you can make numbers say anything you want them to. What I'm telling you is what I'm seeing. A lot of the things I've been seeing are things that are not related to COVID. Croup, RSV are coming back for kids that are much older than they should be and it's because they've been away from it. Most people have the ability to fight it off because they've been around it and we get an immunity to it. We've all been inside for a year. Now we're seeing things that we used to fight off that we're not now. It makes you wonder. Maybe the masks will help in some people's mind for this, but what about some of the other things that are now coming up? Not everything is COVID when it comes to hospitalizations. Not everything is related to that. But what we also need to do is think about the entire child. The mental and health aspect of this is huge. Suicide rates have gone up. If you don't believe me, please research it. I implore you to keep this optional for the parents. The parents know their kids, they know the risk and they should be making the choice for their children. As far as I know, we still live in a, in a world where that should matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and with that, I appreciate everyone's comments and for sharing your thoughts and concerns both in person and on the Zoom. I would ask at this point with the agreement of the board that we take a five minute recess to stretch and refresh and then come back to get through this agenda this evening. If the people that didn't have an opportunity to speak would like to be the first people that speak during the later public comment, that's okay, but we do need to move on to the agenda when we come back from our short break. Also to note, there may be some comments, amendments, adjusted emotions, what have you at the table here. And I believe that, and I'm informed with Ms. Luke's agreement that we've taken very much public comment so that we will not be revisiting that part of it as we continue on through this process and through the motions on the agenda. So with that, I'll see everybody in five minutes. Thanks. All right, so having heard as much public comment as we did this evening, we now have an action item. And I'll coin it this way that we are in this action item recommending the recommendation. Is there a motion to support the action item as it stands?
Sure move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Um, yeah, I'd like to make a comment. This is Linda Fazini. I'm not there at the moment. I'm in Utah. Public schools need to align with local, state and federal health guidelines. Even if we're not mandated or required, I believe it's our responsibility to get as many children back in school as possible as safely as possible following the recommended best practices. Springfield School District needs to provide the best possible learning environment for all children. The medical and educational experts, the CDC, the AAP, the AMA, CHOP, the Pennsylvania and the Montgomery County Departments of Health all recommend reinstating indoor masking from K to twelve and returning children to in-person learning. We know from research and our own personal experience that we can effectively prevent transmission in schools using masks. So I would like to make a motion that we require universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students and visitors to K to twelve schools.
Okay.
I believe, wait, I'm not done. I believe it is the correct way to return to school at this time. And this is why I've spent the past months keeping up with recent virus statistics, evolving research, the Delta variant, recommendations from medical and educational experts. I'm not an expert, but I've spoken to countless physicians, read scientific information they've given me. I've also reviewed peer reviewed articles and spoken to several pediatricians specifically about masking. Recently, five, as recently as in the past two days. There have been many public comments at meetings and I've received emails stating masks are harmful to children. So I want to clearly state medical experts that I talked to say the best thing to do by far to improve all students' social and emotional well being is to get them back to in-person learning and keep them there. I'll repeat that. Medical and educational experts are adamant that being in person, in school, wearing a mask is the safest thing for all students at this time physically and emotionally. Viruses have one job to reproduce and spread and COVID nineteen constantly mutates attempting to improve on that job. Last year, we were here in August arguing over many of the same issues. Masking, how to return to school, parents and students wanting to return to normal. Families wanting the freedom to choose what they want for their individual child. Now this school year, we're still dealing with the same issues. COVID nineteen is not going away. It's a part of our lives and the school year. We need to stop denying reality. I understand everyone is sick of wearing masks and tired of dealing with the virus. But it is our job as a board and as a community to educate children and our responsibility to deal with the difficult unchanged reality of this situation. If we allow everyone to deal with this individually, we have no real chance of controlling transmission. Only as a community can we address public health and prevent transmission. Having the school be mask optional, especially at the K to six level at this time, introduces the real possibility of several things that I am greatly concerned about. One, it allows for the potential shutdown of a building if, if in-school transmission causes an outbreak. Two, it raises the possibility that we will be unable to properly contact trace the virus within our community. Three, it further, will further disrupt in-person education because a great number of our students will be required to quarantine. And four, it will cause staffing issues like last year if teachers and staff get COVID and need to quarantine. I understand that this is not a popular stand I'm taking, but I believe it's my responsibility as a school board member to govern in the best interest of each and every student. I need to make decisions not on what's best for myself, for my child, for a group of students or for a group of parents, but on what is the best interest, in the best interest for all students. That's my job. I fully respect and support your right to state your position and disagree, but I please ask you attempt to be respectful to myself, my fellow board members and not attack us or our families. Thank you.
We have a motion and, and a second. Don't we have to deal with that before we can take another motion?
Alicia, do we need to deal with the, the motion that was first on the table and the second? And then Mrs. Fazini had, had a motion during her comment section, but do we, we need to deal with the first one? Correct?
Yeah, I mean, you could do it two ways. I think you could either deal with the current motion that's been motioned and seconded, finished, delivered comments and vote on it and then move to the new motion or if there's a second to amend the agenda, you could do it that way too. But the way that she did it was as a new motion.
As a new motion, but then that would be silly for us to vote on ours and then go to that. So maybe, yeah, I, I think it would. Do we amend it or what do, or do we go, then we go forward? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there, are there other questions or comments then from other board members before we take the vote on the existing motion?
Yeah, I have a comment that I would like to make. And I appreciate tonight the respectful way that the questions were comment and comments and from the community. We have all listened and heard how some communities have not been as respectful. So I do, and we didn't know what to expect, any of us tonight. So I do appreciate that and I'm very proud of Springfield for that. And, and in the emails that I received also, as we all received, this is a difficult situation which we've been tasked with. Then, and I've heard people comment that the governor and the medical officials should have passed, should have taken responsibility for this and they have not. I, I actually don't necessarily agree with that. School districts, schools were meant to be run at the local level and I respect the fact that we are being allowed in our community to make the decision that we feel is in the best interest of our students. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So there was a recent report in Education Week that one point four million students did not enroll during the pandemic and I'm concerned about getting the back. That's, that's approximately three percent of students. And it's, the greater concern is with our younger students are lower, are lower grades. This is, this is what really concerns me and I, and I believe that many children are afraid to come to our schools. And I believe that many parents are fearful to send their children to our schools because of the, the potential of contracting the virus because we, we do know that it, it's scary. So, and, and if masks, wearing masks, if nothing else, if that makes our students feel more comfortable because we do things every day to make students feel comfortable to come into our buildings and feel safe. So I, I do recognize that we had a successful summer plan, a summer program that, but, but there, that was a smaller group of students and it was, was optional. Everybody has to send their kids back to school in the fall. They don't have that option to keep them home. And, and we know when there are more children, the potential.
We're not going to have that while board members are talking. I will have to ask you to leave, so please don't do that.
There's a potential with more children for there to be, to be transmission. Regarding the mental health issue, that, that concerns me greatly. You know, as, as an educator, I, I, having, you know, worked in, in schools and currently my biggest concern with the mental health issue is the students that are isolated, that are our home, that are not in school. And, and though I'm certainly concerned about everybody's mental health, that's where I saw personally and professionally the, the greatest concern. I want those students in school in person so that we can help address mental health issues. We have resources in our schools for that. So if, if we shut down the school without a virtual option, just as Mrs. Fazini had said, I wonder about how our students will learn. You know, if students are not reading on grade level by third grade, their chances of graduating are, you know, significantly diminished. And we've already lost a lot this year and I want to get them in school. I want them to feel safe. I want our schools to continue to operate. You know, according to the CDC, as I think someone had said tonight, if students, both students are masked and are three feet apart, then we don't need to quarantine them. It doesn't say that about teachers, but it does state that about students. And so that would significantly help with keeping our schools open. So I'm, I'm not even so concerned about whether masks are effective or not. And who believes that if my students.
Again, if I hear it again, I'm just going to end the meeting and then we won't get anywhere or you'll be asked to leave. So please, you were given the respect when you were commenting, not one of us sat there and scoffed at anything that you said. And I would appreciate that every member of this board is respected in that same fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I said, I, I'm not so concerned about whether, you know, masks are effective or not. What I'm concerned is how my students and their families feel about that. If they feel that they are safer with the mask and they're more, they are willing to come in with masks as opposed to staying home, that, that's what's important to me at this point. I want to get them into school. So, so currently we do have masks that are required for K to six and optional for seven to twelve. This was pending three things, a vaccine becoming widely available for, for children under twelve, additional new information or recommendations and, and the, the parent survey. And so I don't see at this point, knowing that our students need to feel safe to come to school, that keeping our students open, our buildings open for in-person instruction, that the majority of, but I'm sorry, that, that this is, I can't, could not vote for anything less than having our students in, in having mask mandated. I do consider it, this is what I, I like Mrs. Fazini, this is really what I was elected to do. I feel very strongly that this is truly, that mask mandate is truly in the best interest of our students.
I'd like to say that I, I really don't want to give a medical opinion because I don't have that education. Unlike our paid federal, state and county health officials who are paid to make these kind of decisions and who have abdicated that over the last year and a half and shoved it down to our level. So we have to stand up and take the responsibility and the abuse and everything else that goes along with it. I say, if they say they recommend it, then we recommend it. When they mandate it, I'm all for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Earl, Dr. Wright and Mrs. Fazini. I, I hope that you all know that I value all of your opinions and all of your comments.
Colleen, can we possibly get the input from Trish Smith about this?
Not yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my comments at this point and just as you did, Linda and, and Dr. Wright and Mrs. Earl. So as I respect everything that you're saying, and I think there's value in, in much of what you've said and much of what I've heard tonight, I have a couple of thoughts on this too that I, that I want to share. One is I want the kids in school and I want them to stay in school. I, that hands down, that's what I want. As I started off this meeting tonight, I I said, I think that we all want this to be the start of a successful school year. So whatever it's going to take to keep them in school is is what I want to do. But it really depends on what you believe about the mask. And the mask, you know, that there is just a lot. People aren't even close on the spectrum, you know, polar opposites, polar ends of the earth is where they are on the masking. What I do know, though, is that. If our paid elected officials. Or the Montgomery or the medical experts that they consult with for their advice. Want us to wear masks, they should mandate it. That's just how I feel. There is no mandate. I have read and reread and reread everything from the CDC, from Montgomery County Office of Public Health. From PDE, from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and. There is nowhere in there where they use the word mandate or they use the word required. Nowhere in there. They recommend universal ma- please let me finish. They recommend universal masking. And we in turn should recommend the universal masking. We're not closing the school buildings again unless they mandate us to do that. So why would we say you have to wear masks? We're also at the same time not saying you're not allowed to wear a mask. Wear a mask, wear two, wear three, wear five, wear 10. Please let me finish. I don't care how many you wear, whatever you need to wear to feel comfortable, wear a mask and a guide. Wear it. If that's what makes you feel, my kids are gonna wear their masks. And I say that and they won't be happy. My kids are gonna wear their masks. Why? Because I don't know what I believe. 100% about the mask. I don't know if I believe some of the literature that talks about their efficacy or or not. But what I do know is that I don't want them to get COVID. I don't want any of your kids or our kids to get COVID. I don't. And that is from my heart. If you know me at all, you know I speak from my heart. I don't want anybody to get it. I don't want anybody to get sick, hospitalized, die. I don't want any of that. So if you think the mask works, wear it by all means, wear multiple. It's okay. And and I will be the leader that will make sure that nobody is bullied for wearing a mask or for not wearing a mask. But I'm telling you, this is, this is firmly where I'm planning. I'm planning that these people need to step up. We didn't take away. Wolf's rights with that constitutional amendment of, it was a matter of checks and balances, is what it was. They have 21 days. 21 days to decide if they're going to continue a mandate that he makes or change it. Do we get 21 days? To make our decisions as volunteers on the school board? I don't think so. So step up, do it. If you want it mandated, I'll also be the first one to say I'm not going to fight it. Mandate it and we'll go with it. But but that's, that's really my passionate position of of where I am. The masks are not banned. They're recommended. I highly recommend you wear the mask. You want your kid to stay in school? And if that's, there's a chance that that could help, have your kids wear the mask. Mine are wearing their mask. But can I say here, can I sit here and say? That that you should, that it should be mandated by us? No, I can't. So that that is, that is, those are my comments. Does anybody else have anything to say at this point?
I do, yeah. I I've spent a lot of time going back and forth on this. I'm a parent, but my, you know. My children, I are are a little bit older and and make their decisions and I have to live with that. I look at this from so many different angles. I think the one angle I look at it most from is risk and. Every single person in this room is going to fall on a different place on the risk spectrum. And that's okay. And I don't know how this vote is going to go. And that's also okay, because I also know that every member of this school board at this table and on Zoom. Wants to do the right thing for the right reason. And we all have different risk thresholds and we are going to vote with. Our hearts and we're going to vote with what we truly believe, not out of fear. Not out of bullying, not out of pressure. We hear you. We hear. All of you, we hear the concerns for our children, for for our community. We hear the desire to be able to make our own decisions as parents and and implement those decisions. But whatever happens at the end of this vote, I ask that we be respectful of one another. We be respectful. Whether you have a mask on or you don't have a mask on, please be respectful to one another, both in the audience and with those of us at the table. I I ask that, but. Dr. Wright, you you raised a very good point, one which was. In June, a decision was made by this board by a vote of, if I recall, five to four. That we would, masking would be mandated for K six and would be optional for seven through 12. And so that's where today our health and safety plan sits. So I want to make that very clear. Okay, so that's where our plan sits as of today prior to this vote. One of the things that we did talk about is we wanted to understand what was happening through the summer and with this, you know, emerging Delta variant that we kept hearing about. And you all and and many of you, you know, very well educated, both who prefer masks and who don't prefer masks. Have shared great information with all of us and we've digested. Much of it, you know, through emails, but much of it tonight, too, as quickly as we could, and and we thank you for for that and and for sharing that. With us. The third piece of that was a a survey that was issued. Throughout the Springford community. And and so Mr. Rizzo, I'm wondering, before we get to a vote and before we move forward. Could we look at, discuss and talk about a little bit, what did we see out of that survey and and how will that potentially lead? Whether we continue to move forward with the current. Health and safety plan that we have in place that was voted in in June, or whether we, you know, kind of move with with some of these changes that have been. Recommended and mandated. I don't know. So.
Sure, I'm happy to provide that information. Excuse me. So the survey that we sent out was through Skyward, which allowed for one response per child. So multiple children in one family yielded multiple responses, possibly if a parent completed it. The the data was broken down by elementary and secondary. So at the elementary level, which is K to six, the survey results yielded a 79.76 response rate. A percent response rate, 36.67 optional K to 12, 42.91 required K to 12. And 20.43 required K to six optional seven to 12. At the secondary level with a 75.12% response rate, 41.68 optional K to 12 masking. 41.19 required K to 12 masking and 17.13 required K to six masking with optional masking for seven through 12. So that's a, that's the the quick breakdown of the data. I do want to share while we're talking about data, because a lot of numbers have been shared in terms of high and substantial and just while I have the mic. Prior all last year, we had three levels. We had low, moderate and substantial. This year, we now have four, low, moderate, substantial and high. So it's important to know that because what was substantial last year was 100 and greater. What is now substantial is 50 to 50 to 99, and then it goes to high or anything over 100. Having said that, I also, last week or a week and a half ago, found out that there's a. Difference in the way the numbers are reported between the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And I caught that. Many of you know, I was interviewed on Fox 29 and I found out at that interview that we were in high based on the CDC, but. Our numbers said we were in moderate based on the PA Department of Health. So I rolled with it. And then I went and started looking into it. So I did reach out to Montgomery County Office of Public Health. The CDC's numbers are, however you define this, unclean or not clean numbers, and PA Department of Health. Montgomery County said is a more reliable number to go by. So having said that. CDC reported that we are 104.46 per 100,000 with a 4.34% positivity rate, which puts us in that high category that I mentioned. There's a two-day difference in CDC's reporting window and PA Department of Health's reporting window. PA Department of Health, which is what I've been sharing with the school board ever since we started pulling these numbers together. That is 68.2 per 100,000 with a 4.3% positivity rate, putting us in a substantial. Category. Again, two-day difference. Don't know if those numbers make the difference, or those two days make the difference or not. The last time we saw 68.2 per 100,000 was that beginning to mid-May range last year. Interestingly enough, Montgomery County's initial guidance prior to switching and following CDC was to. Base their recommendations on school district transmission rates. So that statistic emerged three weeks ago. So we now have that statistic available to us. I just want to share that. In month, in Springford's footprint is, our numbers are 33.87 per 100,000 with a 3.44% positivity rate, which then puts in moderate. So. This week I found out we are in high, substantial and moderate. So but according to PA Department of Health, according to Montgomery County Office of Public Health. We follow and what Dr. Arcoosh said today during her press release was the DOH numbers. So that's the numbers we have been using and will continue to use. Just as an added metric, I provide Springford's numbers as well. So just to give you more data so that you know where we are. That's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Are there any other questions or comments?
Actually, can we have clarification on those those numbers? You kind of went through them quickly. Was there, can we, I'd like to know with the elementary school, what the total of of elementary parents wanted. Mask mandates for K to six and of the secondary, what wanted mask mandates for secondary?
So of of the three, the three options, so the, is that what you mean, three options?
Well, one option that they had was if they wanted optional mask K to 12, then they had for. They both groups had a mandatory masking for K to 12, then elementary had the option of optional masking. For secondary and mandatory masking for for elementary and secondary had the flip of that. So as an elementary parent. What I wanted, how many of my elementary parents wanted mandatory mask wearing for K to six? Because that would be K to six or if they put the K to 12. So those parents that chose either K to 12 mandatory or K to six mandatory. Would both have wanted K to six mandatory. And the same thing with secondary, those that picked. K to 12 mandatory and seven to 12 mandatory, because that would be both for the secondary. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it. So to answer your question, so if you're combining essentially elementary requiring K to 12. And then elementary requiring K to six and optional seven to 12, those numbers, okay, yeah. So at the elementary level. 63 points, 63.34 required, percent required, optional 36.66. At the secondary level, 41.19 required, 58.81 optional.
Right. So so what that was saying in our results is that the majority of our K to six parents. Wanted a mandatory mask wearing and the majority of our secondary wanted an optional.
That's correct.
I'm just going to make a brief comment on my perspective on this. I'm going to lean more towards the safety of the students. I am medically trained with 32 years in clinical research and development, 14 of which were in the development of pediatric vaccines worldwide. I have seen and witnessed in the United States and other countries what a devastating virus can do. So I would hate to see this turn the wrong way and we don't really know which way this is going to go. So I'm going to err to protect children until we have more information. And perhaps more or better vaccines.
There's a motion on the table.
There is. Are there any more questions or comments from the board? Okay, so with that, then all in favor say aye of the motion as it stands. All in favor say aye. Yes, I I I can do that and that's fine. I can, I can read the motion out. So that everyone can hear it. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes an amendment to the District's 2021, 2022 Health and Safety Plan. Effective immediately to align with recommendations of the Montgomery County Department of Health. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And recommends that students and staff kindergarten through 12th grade wear appropriate face coverings while indoors during school activities. This amendment herein does not otherwise change mask requirements on buses as a result of the mandated order of the CDC. Further, nothing herein shall, nothing herein shall limit the administration's requirement to adhere to mandatory mitigation strategies. That may be required in the future by the Montgomery County Department of Health or other applicable agencies with oversight over the district. That is the motion as it stands. We have a first, we have a second, we've had a number of comments made, and at this point, then we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Nay. Yeah, opposed, nay.
Okay, so with that, we're going to do roll call. Well, we'll go around. Who said, who said no at this point? Okay, so so we're going to go around and do a roll call. Okay.
Yeah, that would be cleanest.
Okay, that's fine. So Wendy. Or Mrs. Earl, what is your position?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan? Okay, Mrs. Fazini, you would be seated there next.
No.
Mrs. Fazini, did you respond? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yeah, that was a no from Linda Fazini.
Okay, thank you. Yep, Mrs. Melton?
No.
Okay, Mr. DiBello? Can you use your mic?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And then my vote would be last, and that's a yes also. So that motion does pass. So, Ms. Luke, what do we do about the? The other motion? Is there, the motion that Mrs. Fazini and Fazini made. I'm assuming would override the motion we just passed if that was to go through.
Correct. And the, if both motions had failed, the reason that I was. Said what I said last time is if both motions had failed, it would have been the status quo. If the motion, it was currently written, had failed, then there could have been the motion because that would have been a different course. But obviously, at this point, the board has voted not to mandate masks with the vote that they just passed.
Then I I misspoke.
I think it was still six, three, if my math was right.
I just, I just want it on the record. I just want it on the record.
Right, and I I I did, I appreciate that clarification, but it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have changed the outcome.
Okay, so we move on to the rest of the agenda, or do we have a second for the motion?
You could, you could have the motion, and if there's a second vote again, I think it's, there's, it's been voted on. But if, you know, right, because there's six that were against, five that were against the mandate.
Please, please let us get through the business. Okay, so.
So you can move on.
We can move on through the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to board and committee reports. We have Mr. DiBello for finance. Mr. Jackson for property. Do you have yours up?
Sure, thank you. Property committee met on August 10th. Just a point of clarification. Miss Board Member Wendy Arrow was in attendance, even though it doesn't reflect. In the documentation. Business items that were discussed were summer operation updates for the Rogers Ford, Rogers Ford Library, structural repairs. The 938 Center Phase One Root Proofing Placement. the ninth rate center phase one root replacement, the Limerick Elementary boiler replacement, the five, six, seven center boiler replacement, McNally Stadium egress expansion update, and we also discussed some cleaning status for the for the building readiness for the opening of school. There would have been an item that we be placed on the agenda that is on the agenda for board approval, and that is the chiller that was replaced at the Rogers Ford Elementary School. Other business that was discussed was the delivery and restocking of PPE for each school as we prepare to open for the new school year. Chief Boyer will be applying for PD grants for safe and security communications equipment for seven digital radios. And it was a short meeting, seventeen minutes, and at the end of the meeting, it was determined that all PPE is ready, is has been received and ready for the new school year. That includes ventilation, cleaning protocol, and sanitation protocol for all schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. DeBello, do you have your finance report?
Finance Committee met Tuesday, August tenth at the high school conference room and virtually through Zoom meeting. We didn't do our typical review of monthly reports because we're in the process of closing out the the budget year. We do know, speaking of Mr. Fink, that the numbers and the projections that he provided in the May meeting are looking like they're going to hold true as far as what we see in the budget items, both items that will come in as a deficit or items will become in as a surplus. We will have a full report related to the closeout of the budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty dash twenty one school year. Probably September, October timeline, because they will be going through a budget closeout and they're out of process. We did really want to get together and have a meeting just to really make sure that we're in more alignment with the spending related to the start of the school year. So the rest of the evening was basically focused on that. We just did a quick review of cash and reserves as of the end of July was approximately fifty million, with another fifty million in real estate taxes expected to come in by the end of August. Real estate assessments, previous reported assessment growth estimated for twenty twenty one school year fell short by eleven point nine million. But Mr. Fink had estimated that this would be made up by the end of August as of seven, seven thirty one, ten point nine million of that short for has been made up so far. So we are on target probably to be within what we projected for the real estate assessments for that school year. The bus patrols stop arm camera installation is proceeding well and should be fully installed and operational by nine fifteen with eighty percent completion by the first day of school. Food services operations will be utilizing the SSO closed site option this year as directed by the state and federal government under these new rules for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Your reimbursable lunches and breakfasts will be free to spring for registered students only and only for the school days. No weekends or holidays. Any school meals or à la carte items will be charged to the student's account or paid for by a student with cash. Mr. Jackson did bring up an interesting point, which I think I want to discuss a little bit further at the next finance meeting, and if there is a child in need like last year that did receive a lunch or breakfast from the district. If they may not necessarily bring for Springford student, but if they are in need, we don't necessarily want to feel the need to turn them away. So we're going to look at that closer. We did review the COVID nineteen related expenditures and graph grants, graphs, grants. We reviewed the status of each COVID related federal grants. Know that all have been submitted, all have been approved, except the SR two and SR three, which are both under review and should be approved in the next few weeks. I did ask as a follow up about the allocations for psychological services previously requested by me towards the April, May of last year of the last school year. And there is within the SR three includes about one million dollars for allocation of these services with allocate with additional occasion, which includes allocations for learning loss and service program as well. With that, the meeting ended, and we we went to property. We already had that report. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Western did have their first meeting in August. I was not there for that. Mr. DeBello or Mrs. Earl, do you want to comment on the body of that meeting?
Oh, thank you. It was. It was really. It was a pretty fast meeting. We 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 did a lot of preparation for the start of the school year, making sure everything is alignment. Once again, as we talked about in finance here and property, that was making sure that the Western Center is ready to go with the start of the school year. We did have to approve the health and safety plan. With that, the vote was taken and within that health and safety plan, masks were recommended as optional as well at the Western Center unless there's a change by the county or state in the future. So that was pretty much the gist of the meeting. There wasn't anything else beyond that. I don't recall.
Is it also true that Upper Perk and Pots Grove, the schools that were in the tech school with that vocational school that they're aligning with the same mask optional position as well?
Yeah, I mean, Pots Grove, Upper Perk, Borotown, all all voted or Quaker Town, well, but within our in our neighborhood, Pots Grove, Upper Perk, and Borotown have all voted into moving forward with mass optional.
Thank you. MCIO?
We haven't met this month.
Mr. Schaefer, PSBA.
Nothing to report this evening.
And Mr. Rizzo, you want to continue with your superintendent's report?
Sure. Seems a little strange at the end of the third hour of our meeting together to welcome people back. But welcome back. We're excited that this Wednesday we do welcome back new staff, new hires throughout the summer. We do welcome back all of our staff next Wednesday, the twenty fifth, and then our students will be back in our buildings on Monday, August thirtieth. Very excited to bring in our new class of kindergarteners, as well as our graduating class of two thousand twenty two. So really excited about what this year could bring for us. We're really excited for the opportunities as we move forward. So thank you for that. The next part was school safety, and I did give you most of that. I do. There was a question about three feet versus six feet, et cetera. I just want to remind people that we are in all of our settings, three feet, and that is measured nose to nose or center to center. And that was verified by Mr. Hunter and his team that we're able to achieve that in all in all environments. Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I want to give you an update on that. Critical race theory or CRT has been brought up in our community, and I want to make just take a minute to just talk about that a little bit. Based on our consultant and the work that he has done, he defines CRT as an intellectual movement and loosely organized framework of legal analysis based on the premise that race is not a natural biologically grounded feature of physically distinct subgroups of human beings, but a socially constructed category that is used to oppress and exploit people of color. Having said that, critical race theory is not something that Springford is adopting in our schools. There's not a CRT curriculum that we are teaching to our students. It is something that is out there and being and being discussed in the community that we are not. That is not happening in our buildings. Our the work of our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee in consultation with our consultant, Carlos Wiley, is to provide professional development to our staff on culturally responsive teaching and inclusive practices, collecting data and analyzing that data, and then planning for whatever improved practices might be needed based on that data analysis. Those are really the things that we're looking at, and that we're excited for that work to continue moving forward. But I wanted to dispel some of the comments that we've been hearing and some of the concerns for our community members. That's really all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any questions or comments from Mr. Rizzo? Do we have a solicitor's report this evening?
I don't have anything to report. Thank you. Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. I
I I'm probably still not going to have anything to report. But thank you.
Thank you. You just looked like you wanted to say something, so I just jumped right over to her. Sorry about that. Can you? Can Rich, can we have Trish or Erin? Hi there. Thanks for joining us tonight. Thanks for being back.
Hello, thanks for having me. It's the end of summer. I don't have a lot to report right now. I had hoped to speak prior to your vote, and it didn't work out that way. So the only thing I have to say is, and some people alluded to it, my concern with the way the vote went is that we are required, it's not a recommendation, it's a requirement, that we will have to contact trace and quarantine. So unfortunately, this year, let's hope that it's not a high number, but if all parties involved aren't masked, we will need to contact trace at six feet. If all parties were masked, we would be allowed to keep people as long as they were three feet distance. So it's going to take a little extra time because we're going to have to determine who was wearing masks and when. But I guess my request is that as we start to see how this year looks and we navigate through these changes as more students come in that the board is willing to work with us if we have extra needs or get overly burdened. I'm hoping it doesn't happen, but we need to be a little realistic.
Absolutely, that we can. Nothing is set in stone, right? I think we learned that last year in the last
We sure did.
months, right? So if there if you're seeing a problem, please bring that to our attention so that if we need to adjust or modify, that we do that.
We will definitely do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes or to the rest of the agenda. The minutes A and B, questions or comments? Personnel A through P, questions or comments? Finance A through J, questions or comments? Property A, question or comment on that? Programming programming and curriculum A through D, any questions or comments there? Conferences and workshops A through D, questions or comments there? Other business under A, we have a number of policies on the agenda for a second read. Are there any questions or comments? And then B through F, questions or comments? Okay, with all of that done, is there any more board comment this evening? Okay, then we'll go back to public to be heard. We'll start in person, and I would like to start with anyone that wanted to speak to us that did not have the opportunity to do that during the first public comment session. Is anybody in here that was here at that time that didn't get a chance to speak? Okay, then.
Hi, I'm Abby Deardorf, seven oh four, Collin Court in Rogers Ford. The comment that I wanted to make earlier tonight prior to the vote was that we have amazing opportunity to make sure that the kids are in school and to make sure that they stay in school. And masks are part of that, whether you like them or not. We saw last year the amazing work that all of you did, and it was successful, and kids were able to get into school and stay there. And we have an opportunity to continue to do that, and you guys in the vote think fit to promote that. The data on masks is anecdotal. There is no scientific study that shows whether the method of them outweighs the potential problems. So yes, masks get dirty. It's not the bad, and should they be wearing the same mask for six hours a day? But I wanted to share a personal anecdotal story about masking in my family. So my daughter, who was four weeks old, almost two years ago, got RSV, and as you guys know, that's the common cold that can just be passed around very, very contagious. And it's normally not a really big deal for the older population, but my daughter was four weeks old, and she was in shop for ten days and struggled to breathe. And as a nurse, as a parent, it was one of those terrifying things I've ever experienced. And I know firsthand, you can give me every scientific fact that you want, but I know that masks work because of the RSV rates this year. And now you take them away, and the RSV rates are back. You can't give me any YouTube video, anything that will change my mind on that. And our kids, we all agree that the kids do best in school for all the reasons, medical reasons, social, emotional, all of it. And you had an opportunity tonight to stand up and be a leader in the community about this. I commend Dr. Wright. I commend Linda Fazini for trying to make it to make an amendment on this, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I I I hope that we do have a great start to this year in person. Thank you.
John Yonchuk, twelve. John Yonchuk, twelve, Edmund's Drive. I'd also like to commend Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Melton, Dr. Wright, and Mrs. Fazini for trying to stand up for all of the children in this district. I'm really tired of hearing about choice. You are a public entity charged with spending public funds with the mandated right by the state constitution and PA school code to educate every single child in this district in a safe and responsible manner. I'm really tired of hearing about the most selfish and ignorant in this room and this community try to talk about what they want. You are a public entity. You are spending all of our money, and you owe all of us the opportunity for our children to feel safe in these schools. If you cannot do that, if you are tired of all the problems that have been created by a once in a century pandemic, then the door is right there. You are welcome to resign tonight. Because what you did tonight was just an act of total public abdication of responsibility. Thank you.
Doug Sigafus, two twelve Walnut Street, Spring City, PA. I debated very hard whether or not I would talk tonight. Being called ignorant, my choice, my decision, name calling. It all needs to stop. We all have free choice. That's what that vote was about. It's an option. It's a choice. There's too much information. Everybody's on information overload. I really highly recommend that people get off their phone, get off the internet, turn off the TV, go out and experience life a little bit. You're tearing each other apart for no reason at all. If you're at risk, wear a mask if you feel that it helps you. It hurt my kids. I saw my six year old be afraid of other kids and other parents and other adults when they weren't wearing a mask. Kids should not be taught to fear other people. Their bodies are made to fight viruses, immunities. Some are immune deficient. I understand that. That's a fact. I get it. That's minority, not the majority. And your immunity gets stronger when you're exposed to viruses. That's how the body works. That is science. That is fact. The reason that kids are getting infected with RSV and the common cold is because they were shuttered. That is a fact. That's what those doctors are telling you. I feel for you. I understand your situation and I understand your fear, but you don't make decisions based on fear. You make them on fact. And yes, masks don't work. The CDC says they don't work. For twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, they said they don't work. Ask the people that are in California and in the West, where all they do is smell the smoke from fire. They can smell the smoke. It can breathe in the particles of the virus. But we, you guys have a choice. We all have choice. That's the whole point. Here's a quote from the CDC back at Dornia Boldivirus. "Experiences shown that communities faced with epidemics or other adverse events respond best with the least anxiety when the normal social functioning of the community is least disrupted. Strong political and public health leadership to provide reassurance and to ensure that needed medical care services are provided are critical elements. If either of these is seen to be less than optimal, a manageable epidemic could move toward catastrophe." What we're witnessing with this fear is going toward catastrophe. You understand, when we managed epidemics in the past, we were calm, we took necessary precautions. The rest of this is not necessary. As somebody who has survived COVID and experienced it myself in my family with my children before we were not allowed to go to school in November, you made the right choice. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Karen Weingarten. I'm at Sixth Dorothy Circle in Royers Ford. Earlier, I wanted to mention, a lot of people kept saying, no one is dying. I get it, no one is dying, but there's a huge gray area in between infection and death, right? We have active shooter drills, nobody's dying. Our athletes wear helmets, mouth guards, shin guards, nobody's dying. We take these wise precautions with safety in mind so that nobody's dying. But no one is dying argument doesn't really work. Masks were a precaution. If your child is experiencing issues wearing masks, imagine the issues your child would have experiencing some of the lesser yet long-term effects of this infection. Intense fatigue, sleeping or napping for weeks after the infection. You're healthy, you're fine, but you cannot get out of bed. I had COVID, I slept for three weeks. I had the most mild case of it. It took me four months to recover to be able to work out. Yes, I'm not a child, but some of the other things that are affecting children are loss of smell and taste. Can they still go to school? Can they still function? Yeah, but it's a hell of a way to get back to explain to a six-year-old why they can't taste ice cream anymore. Tinnitus, which is ringing in your ear. I've had that since February. Again, mild case. I thought I was having hot flashes, didn't realize I had COVID until I got the test done. Imagine explaining to a third grader what tinnitus is, constant ringing in your ear. I hope that nobody gets that. These are the kind of things, I'm not talking about ending up attached to a respirator. I'm not talking about death. I'm talking about these are the side effects, even a mild or a case that you have no symptoms from, you can get these things. So that recovery is really difficult for an adult. It's really difficult for a child. When you're actually sick with it, even for a day or two, the mental anguish you go through, wondering if you're going to recover, wondering where this is going to go, wondering if you're going to go to the hospital. Did you infect your friends? Did you infect your teacher? Did you infect your friend's grandmother? That happened in my situation. What are you missing in class? These are all things that are really difficult for an adult to deal with. So I imagine for a child, it has to be incredibly difficult to deal with. So when we talk about the mental wellness in this, that's a part that I want to make sure we understand. And it's not just the child, it's the child whose parent has it, who's going through this. I saw my own kids slipping my dinner under the door because I had to quarantine for an additional seven days and them asking me, am I going to be okay? Am I going to have to go to the hospital? These are the kind of things that a mask can help prevent. So I understand, I totally understand what you had on your plate today and I respect all of you and appreciate everything you did, except that we do follow a lot. We take a lot of the recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics and we turn them into requirements. We use their recommended vaccine schedules and their requirements. We follow things like car seat, car safety, nutrition, baby feeding. All of those things come from the AAP and we follow it. I want my kids in school. My kids are vaccinated. But I also think it's really unusual that 60% of the K through six parents wanted masks and you ignored it. Thank you.
Anthony's going to remind you that we're keeping it totally calm. Okay?
1211 Meadow View Lane, Riverdale, Daniels. I want to thank you all, no matter how it was voted, and also do not take this personally. How well do we understand freedom? Are you obligated to answer questions of law enforcement? No, the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution provides us the right to remain silent, but we must state we are invoking the right that remains silent. When in a public area or building open to the public, is it unlawful to not comply with their mask required sign? No, it is a request that I can choose to comply or not. We do not need to disclose to anyone our reason or a medical condition for not wearing a mask. Does law enforcement take an oath which includes protecting and serving the general public? Not at all. Their oath is to protect and ensure citizens free exercise of their constitutional rights. Can I record anything I see when standing in the public or publicly accessible area? No expectation of privacy exists when in public. Do I need permission or do I need to tell someone if I'm audio recording them? Delaware PA and J are one-party consent states. Maryland requires both parties. During school board public comment time, am I prohibited to say a public figure's name, including a board member negatively and even vehemently? No, I'm not prohibited. The United States, as the Supreme Court noted in New York Times versus Sullivan, is founded on the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust and wide open and that it may well include vehement, costly and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. The school boards are not allowed to enact a public comment policy that supersedes the higher law and that there is more higher law than the United States Constitution. These government officials at many school boards mistakenly believe that all power is inherent in the government. That is wrong. In the United States of America, all power is inherent in the people. Under the principles of the Declaration of Independence, Constitution provides for a government operating under the authority of the governed. This achievement is unprecedented in history. Under the guise of public health, an individual in alienable rights to his body is infringed upon. So here I inform the board of such infringement if COVID-related restrictions such as mask, testing, quarantine and vaccination are required in public place such as schools. Thank you.
Any other comments in the room?
Good evening, Anthony Frigo, 1003 Main Street, Woodfield, Pennsylvania. I circulated a letter amongst you July 30th. Apparently it had some effect.
Could I just ask you to speak into the mic a little bit so we can hear you very clearly? Thank you.
I circulated a letter amongst you on July 30th. Apparently it had some effect. You are, I believe, going to remove the Black Lives Matter stickers from the school? Am I correct?
This is public comment though, so
Yes, you're correct.
and answer, but Mr. Rizzo can answer that question. He so chooses.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to consider my position and to, I know that my last miss was rather lengthy. I would appreciate, I appreciate your time and I hope that some attention will be given to my comments on the EDI committee in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments in the room? Then are we, no, 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 you can't. You're only allowed one time in the beginning and one time at the end. So thank you. We're going to move on to the Zoom now, please. How many hands are raised? Okay, can we start with those, please?
Ellen W., you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Ellen Townsend Wasmansky, 416 Navajo Drive, Royers Ford, PA. I just want to thank the majority of the board for their vote tonight. I am elated to tell my daughter of seven years old that she will be able to lower her mask when she feels she's having a panic attack. She described to me a day where she could not understand her teacher and what her teacher was saying. She got a panicked feeling because she was falling behind. And what happened was she became so panicked, she began to breathe heavily. The mask became obstructing to her as she breathed in the mask. She panicked and raised her hand to go to the bathroom where she sat on the toilet and breathed freely without her mask, without the fear of getting in trouble for removing it. My daughter will go to bed and rest easy each day knowing that she can remove her mask when she needs. Just like I watched the woman earlier pull down her mask due to a medical condition while she explained that masks should be mandatory and that you should lead with control and be steadfast with your decision of mandating masks. Why can she remove her mask and make a decision for her medical condition to lower her mask and be able to speak, but my kid can't? So I really appreciate the board and the majority that had made the decision tonight. And I hope that this is something that will prove to be effective and that we can move throughout the school year with this decision. Thank you so much.
Next.
Lauren Day, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, this is Lauren Day, 57 Greenbrier Drive, Phoenixville. I first want to thank Dr. Wright, Mrs. Fazini, Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Melton for trying to get the survey data for everybody to hear and make a motion for K to six to be masked. I sort of don't understand what happened. We have 63.34% of parents in K to six want masks. 36% were optional. Seven to 12, most parents were optional. I think you had a compromise there where you had masked K to six and you went optional for seven to 12 and you just didn't take it. We also had majority of parents there on Zoom and a person that were advocating for masks. We just heard from the nurse. She's hoping that we don't have to quarantine and shut down schools, but that's most likely what's going to happen. I'm hoping possibly at the next board meeting, you can have an amendment to do it for K to six. Our children are not vaccinated and they are at risk. And this is in your hands to make it a mandate for K to six. They are not vaccinated. When they are vaccinated, I'm sure we'll all be okay with it. But right now, other kids not masked are putting my kids at risk and it's unfair. I kept mine home last year to see if masks worked. They did. I sent her back. I shouldn't have to keep her home again this year. It's unfair. Follow the science. Take the compromise. K to six wants the mask. Seven to 12 was optional. Take the compromise. Thank you.
Before you go on, since we're commenting on some of these comments that are being made, you know, I would like to add to, please reach out to your legislators. You want masks mandated, reach out to them and, and you know, call them, get them to hear you. We've heard you. We've heard you for the last several weeks. And believe me, we've read the emails. We've heard you. We've read them. Hit your legislators, hit the county, the Department of Health, PA Department of Health, the CDC, you know, hit the county. Send your messages to them, please. Also, if you want them mandated, once they're mandated, you know, I believe that this board will go that way. That's the way the motion is written, that we will follow that. Go ahead.
Allison O'Brien, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Allison O'Brien, 505 Andover Lane, Collegeville, 19426. I'm fuming over the decision of most of the school board members and I'd like to thank those that voted on the side of science. Over 63% of K through six parents voted that they wanted masks required for kids, but I guess that doesn't matter to the board. What is the point then of polling parents? Does the board understand that the CDC and the AAP don't have the authority to mandate masks? I still want to know why in June, the board voted five to four for mandated masks for K through six when cases were low and Delta wasn't prevalent in our area. And now that Delta is prevalent in our area and is mainly affecting the unvaccinated, i.e. children, we reversed this two weeks before school starts. No vaccine is available and no health recommendations have changed. So why was there a complete reversal regarding K through six? Why didn't we let Nurse Trish speak on behalf of the nursing staff prior to the vote? And why aren't we asking about what the teachers and staff want and what their concerns are? The chance to make this a successful school year was right in the board's grasp and you let it slip away. Based off of other schools that have opened in other states with optional masks, we are headed for mass quarantines, enclosures resulting in an interrupted school year. You want the kids in school, but you just voted for a policy that's going to skyrocket quarantines, enclosures. And when this happens, we'll remember that it was caused by the school board's unwillingness to step up for what was right.
Christine D., you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Kristy Janbaski, 310 Fourth Avenue, Montclair. I just want to share that I just feel really disheartened and disappointed at the vote. And I'm sorry that I sound upset. It's just, it's really hard when the similar to what other parents said, I just feel that we talk about giving parents choice and you did a full survey and parents in the elementary age said that they want a mask for their kids. We don't have any other tools to protect them. And it's just, it's really, really upsetting that you are saying you're endorsing choices for parents and the majority spoke and said we would feel safe until our kids are vaccinated. And that was passed back in June when we were at the lowest cases. And the world is very different now where we live than it was in June. And it's just very disheartening. I don't know if that can be revisited before the start of school, but I think I speak for many parents that kept their kids home last year that we really want to send our kids back and we really want them to feel safe in school and not at risk. And the safest way to do that is universal masking, especially for kids until they can get vaccinated, which is, as it stands right now, all of our elementary kids. So I just desperately urge you to please just possibly entertain that before the start of school. Thank you.
Kate Doyle, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Kate Doyle, 310 Woodland Drive, Collegeville. I'm extremely disappointed in the final vote. I will thank the board members who made the case and I appreciate you taking a stand and your courage. I'm extremely disappointed in those board members, especially those that are saying if you want masks mandated, go to your state, talk to the CDC, et cetera. You are elected officials. You are our governing body. You have the power to make this change. So you are choosing to decrease the amount of school I'm sorry, your vote to make masks optional will now require every student exposed to a student or teacher who tests positive for COVID to quarantine. I say every student exposed because how can you determine if both students were wearing a mask at the time of exposure? The nurse that spoke made the comment that it'll be very difficult because they'll have to figure out who's wearing masks. So how will you know if both students were masked at the time they were exposed if masks aren't mandated? Will the teacher take mask attendance at the beginning of each class? Will she need to take track of, keep track of if a student removes their mask for a total of 15 minutes? Most contact tracing occurs after transmission several days. When a student tests positive, will you rely on asking the students if they're masked? The only way to comply with the contact tracing will require you to quarantine every student exposed. Those students will not have access to teacher instruction, only assignments on Canvas. Students without devices K through four may be unable to access Canvas or even have the skills to utilize the platform. Parents and guardians will need to make arrangements for childcare and may jeopardize their employment status and their income. Students that have jobs will need to call out and also jeopardize their employment status or income. Students involved in sports or other extracurricular activities will be unable to participate at practices, games and/or performance that could lead to game forfeiture or performance cancellations that could then possibly impact their college and other post-school job opportunities and education opportunities. Finally, I wanted to address the fact that it's often stated that masks cause the emotional and psychological, the mental health issues. However, in most studies, the reason for the depression and suicidal thoughts and other challenges, mental health challenges that students have had, especially the teens and children who require, I'm sorry, especially the teens, has been due to the fact that they've been socially isolated due to quarantining and constantly in and out of the schools. And also the uncertainty, not knowing whether or not you may have infected And also the uncertainty, not knowing whether or not you may have infected a friend. So I, please, like others here, request that at a minimum, you return to K through six. They do not have the extra protection of the opportunity, like you've
Samir E., you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, my name is Sarah Okashudi, and I live in 202 Spring Lane, Royersford. I'd like to say I've been following all the commands all evening today, and I'm greatly disappointed in the board's decision. I didn't really think that our children's health should be something that we should be talking about or kind of putting it up for vote. I think school should be a place where kids should always feel safe, no matter what happens. And as a parent, I personally feel anxious and worried for my kids. Not only that, that's gonna make my, enforce my decision to not bring them into school, because I don't think it's a safe area for the kids to go to school. That said, the only scenario that keeps on going on in my head all evening since this whole thing started is, what if a kid walks into the classroom and sneezes and infects another kid, and then we have a case of spread in the school? How is that gonna be addressed? How is that gonna be fixed? And we're dealing with a virus that we know very little about. We have a few defense options that we knew about the last couple of years. One of them is a mask. So if we're gonna use a mask to, as a defense mechanism until we find something else, like a more effective vaccine for, for the young kids, then that's, that's the way we should really go, because there's no other way. We don't have any options. We don't get to pick and choose in this scenario. And that was something else I heard this evening. I mean, we should be looking really at the big picture. Where are we going? If we're gonna, if our plan is to contain this, this whole thing and create a safe environment for the kids to go back to school, then you should use all the tools and all the options we have in hand. And I don't think we're doing that. Like to thank everyone who voted against this notion, and I believe that Nurse Trish was also should, should, should have been given the option to speak about this before the vote. Thank you.
Erica Hermans, you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Erica Hermans, 204 Abbey Drive. I just want to quote and really reinforce a promise that was made tonight. Our board president commented, quote, "I am going to be the leader who ensures no child is bullied for wearing a mask, and I really hope that this promise is kept and that parents hold the district accountable to that, because it is wonderfully aspirational." But unfortunately, it has already failed. The school district's zero tolerance policy has already failed, and it failed in those last three days of school. I am not gonna share the anecdotes and the stories of other parents, but I am sure that there are some board members that received emails on this issue. And so, to the woman who cited my lowering of the mask for a medical condition, "I should not have to defend myself and disclose medical information to justify actions." No one said that accommodations could not be made. It is not black and white, and yet we treated this issue tonight black and white, even though the board, even though the board voted, you know, not to entertain any compromise and was, you know, provided us the data at the K through six level. If adults can make comments like this, it is an indication that our children will face the same experience. So please, I hope that your promise is kept.
Do we have any other?
A. Johnson, you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, my name is Alana Johnson. My address is 3 Yerofoi Drive in Royersford. As many parents, I wanted to mention the survey. When I received it, I emailed all of you to tell you that I thought it was ridiculous that we were being asked what we wanted when your plan was already written to keep students safe as your, the oath you took as a school board member stated that it was your job to do. Tonight, I ask again, what was the purpose of the survey? Because you asked what we wanted and then ignored it also, and reversed the mitigation strategies that you had put into place. I'm disappointed that you voted to allow others to put my child at a higher risk of developing and being a carrier of the virus to his siblings and other immunocompromised family members. Based on this reversal of strategies that you outlined in the health and safety plan that we had been given and had lots of time to look over, now with only fourteen days left until school start, I implore you to reconsider a virtual environment as the current program that you're offering is not appropriate for elementary students. If you won't revisit the masking for K to six, I beg that at the next meeting, you re-look at your virtual offering for K to six. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others?
Bethany Stein, you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Yes, hello. This is Bethany Stein, 149 Hunt Club Drive, Collegeville. I thank you for your time tonight, and my comment is, in June, the board voted for mandatory masking for grades K through six. According to the survey, sixty-three percent of K through six parents surveyed wanted mandatory masking. For the past two months, the expectation given to K through six parents of what the health and safety plan entailed was made clear that masks would be mandatory, and parents made their school plans accordingly. Now, two weeks before the start of the school year, that decision is changed, and now parents have to decide if the school plan that they had put into place all summer aligns with their family's needs. I ask the board to reconsider and go back to the original decision made in June to have masking mandatory for K through six. Thank you.
Maggie Y., you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
My name is Maggie Youssef. I'm at 69 Page Lane in Oaks, 19460. I am living through quarantine right now, and I'm gonna try to be brief with these comments. Forgive me if I say something that was addressed that I missed, but I am living through quarantine right now. And I assure you that the social isolation from being quarantined is more damaging to the emotional well-being of a child than wearing a mask and being surrounded by their friends and their wonderful Springfield teachers. I'm living it right now. I have a few questions. Where was the superintendent's input and recommendation for how to proceed with the masking mandate or choice? Last year, the previous superintendent gave there his recommendation. It was asked, and he gave it. Where was the teachers' union's recommendation or input? Where was the nurses' input from the start? One of the board members requested the nurses' input, and it was not given. Do they not matter, just like my vote in the survey did not matter, as many other parents feel? It is highly suspect that the most verbal members of the board sat there quietly today. There was no back and forth but for the board president. It is highly suspect, and shame on you for your premeditated agenda. You did not come here looking to be, coming to listen to what the people have voted for. You came in with your own agenda. That's how I perceive it. Shame on you. You frequently ask, well, what do the neighboring school districts, what are they doing? What did they vote for? That was not mentioned once by the person that usually asks for it. I'm very disappointed, and I will be looking for other options for my children. And I hope, as other people have asked, that you will revisit either a virtual option or some sort of plan for when all of these children will be quarantined, because it will happen. Listen to your nurse for once. There is no mention for what happens to our kids when we're quarantined. What if the whole class is quarantined? What if half the class? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments next?
Kibokaletha, you may not make a public comment. Please unmute yourself, then state your first and last name as well as your full address.
Hi, Kibokaletha, 202 Spring Lane in Royersford. I'd like to thank the board members who were compassionate and understanding and wanted to vote against this motion. I, like many of the other parents, I do not understand why, although a request was made by Ms. Fazini for the nurse to speak, she was not allowed to. I think that would have been very important. I don't understand why our input for the survey was not taken into consideration. It seems like a waste of time and resources to have posted the survey if it was gonna be trashed. Just like other parents have said, my children, a fifth grader and an eighth grader who were already virtual and cyber last year, will not be returning to school this year based on your vote. I'd rather they be safe and to address any issues that arise from them being isolated from their friends. You know, I'd rather that than them being dead, honestly. So, and my kids wearing a mask will not help if other kids are not wearing a mask, and we all know that. It has to be both ways. So I implore you to please bring back the virtual option. At least my kids will have consistency from the beginning of the year. Cyber does not work for us. There's very little to know teacher input. Questions about curriculum, I've had teachers respond back with, "We don't know. We're not the ones who put the curriculum." And it took weeks for me to get answers about certain classes. So at least in the virtual, they get to see their friends from time to time, their teacher on a daily basis. So please bring back the virtual option. You know, we care about our kids, and we're not okay with, with what happened today. Thank you.
At this time, there's no further public comments to be heard on Zoom.
Is there a motion to adjourn?